Okay. Thank you very much. Good morning. It is 10:00 a.m. and we will start our Deschutes County Board of Commissioner meeting on, I believe it is October 7th, 2020. So please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We do have a...
Are we already at the start of that?
Yes, because...
Because what?
Because it was the top of the hour.
We have a professional person who is running our video and she goes, "It is now 10:00 a.m."
Okay.
So anyway, yes, so we were...
We knew you were coming.
Yes. Good morning, Commissioner Henderson. So yes, she has done sports teams. So we are her latest non-sporting team.
Yeah.
And I appreciate her professionalism. So thank you. We had no comments this morning, no citizen input at this time. We do have a consent agenda.
So I have a few comments to make first.
Okay.
So yeah, good morning, everyone. Welcome to our meeting today on the Wednesday. I wanted to address something that came up last week after our Wednesday meeting, which was an editorial in the Ben Bulletin referring to me and calling me quite a few different names. And I want to talk about that in this public forum. I haven't had any comments from anybody at the county or my fellow commissioners about this, so I don't know any of their thoughts. But I want to tell you my thoughts. The issue on this was, the headline reads, "Commissioner Henderson Should Not Use the Phrase 'China Virus.'" And the editorial goes on to say why I'm not a competent commissioner because I did that. And I want to give a little background about why that, the phrase is not unusual, and then some background about the accusations made against me in this article. First of all, the use of the phrase is consistent with actually lots of diseases in our history. It was the Spanish Flu in 1918. We grew up with the German measles. The Mideast Respiratory Syndrome was called MERS. You might remember that. Ebola is a river in the Democratic Congo. Lyme's Disease was a place in Connecticut called Lyme, Connecticut. You'll recall there's a disease called Lou Gehrig's Disease, which was an awful disease, but it's given that name. And then there's, for some of us to remember, Legionnaires' Disease, which came up at American Legion. None of those were intentionally, that I know of, related to any kind of racism, bigotry, or whatever. And I don't think the use of the word "China virus" is either. What's disturbing to me is, I guess, growing up in a different generation than the authors of these, this is really just the speech police trying to tell other people what they can and can't use, and then using that to label somebody all sorts of different names. Now, as I've said, this was written by six or seven people, I believe all of Asian-American descent, who, none of whom I think know me. I don't know any of them. Through Google, you can look them up, but I don't believe they know any of them. But I want to talk a little bit about my history, because I don't think I'm racist or bigoted. And I think the staff here at the county should know that, my fellow commissioners should know that, and the public should know that. I grew up in a community which had a large population of Japanese-Americans, families, and most were in farming. My neighbor across the street was a dentist. But I was close to many Japanese-American families growing up and was well-respected by, as far as I know, all of them, as was my family of multiple generations there. Some of them had served heroically in the World War II, and some had been interred. And I know the stories of both. So I start with that. Then my second, I've also had an extreme amount of involvement with Hispanic communities in my own community growing up, particularly in the orchard and fruit industry. My family has orchards, and some of my family has orchards that are over 150 years old. So I think that... And then third, with regard to this, and people may not know this, and I don't use this, but my wife and I adopted a black son who was, basically saved him from going into the foster care system seven years ago, who we've raised in this community, and tried to help him get his way through life and offer him a better opportunity than he would have had in the Washington State foster system. And that's our only legal child. So for them to come out and say all the things they said without knowing me and saying, you know, that my views are, that I'm xenophobic, racist, divisive, bigoted, et cetera, et cetera, I think is totally wrong, and this has got to stop in our country. You cannot just pick somebody and say these kinds of things. The second part of it is, this was not something that they even knew about, because they went back, this was a political attack ad, where, article where they went back into a Facebook post from four months ago to be offended by what I'd said. They wouldn't, they didn't know what I'd said, and we don't know what lots of people say. But so I hope everybody reads that. I hope my people that work here know some of my background, which I don't very often talk about. And I hope my fellow commissioners know my background a little better than they might when we just decide the kinds of things we decide here. Thank you.
Mr. Henderson, I'm so glad you pointed that out. Yes, I've known you for quite a few years. I know that you don't share with everyone, the son that you and Teresa adopted, and just the kind of things that you get when you, I remember when you telling us about when he was at Ben High School, and he was, actually, there are like racist things, and yet the kids really don't seem to realize, I mean, that that does exist, even in Bend, even in Bend High. So I'm happy you brought that out. And honestly, I learned something by reading that. I didn't know what MERS stood for, but it was actually Middle East, whatever, Respiratory Syndrome.
Respiratory Syndrome.
Yes. So anyway, I learned, because I always just went by MERS. But, you know, thank you for pointing that out. And yes, historically, it has. You know, a lot of diseases get identified by where they started. And I thank you for, you know, addressing that issue this morning. I think it's really important for our community to know. It wasn't an attack on Chinese people. That is definitely not the person that you are. So, you know, I can understand that you would be very upset about that attack. It's truly not, America is a melting pot, and sometimes it works out better than others. And I just think people need to remember civility. So we've seen what's happened, just like with our code enforcement. Our code enforcement has like mushroomed the last little bit. People are just not giving people the benefit of the doubt. Civility is something I'm sure, I know my mother taught it to me, and I'm hoping that people will go back to civility, and it'll make the world a lot better of a place.
Thank you.
Well, and yeah, I mean, I support the fact that, I mean, the terminology, the words, the word "police" for political purposes are just being spun right now. So, I mean, I support the fact that, you know, there's no indication, or, you know, and we've only known each other these last four years in office, but no indication, no decision that has ever been, you know, racist-based, or, you know, there's terminology put out there right now that is really just mind-blowing about how it's being used. And it's the speed of information, it's the media, it's technology with, you know, just being able to take a snippet and spin from it. So, you know, thank you for being strong during this political season. As I say, we're going to work through this together as a community and as a nation at this point in time.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I want to say something a little lighter. Mr. Henderson and I have a real hard problem because I'm from Hepner and he's from Hood River. And even though Hepner is a lot smaller, you cannot believe how many thousands of Oregonians are from Hepner. So anyway, that's usually...
Everybody's connected to Hepner one way or another.
Hepner, yes, there's a lot of connection. Hepner was a, yes, an adorable Irish town that had a mill when I grew up. And anyway, but Hood River, we all know it because of its fabulous fruit and the pears and everything. So, you know, I love those kind of arguments that we have.
Yeah.
I mean, definitely on the lighter side.
Thank you. Thank you.
So thank you for doing this. I'm, it's really disappointing to think that, yes, it was considered racist when it's, actually, it's the virus's origination. We do have a consent agenda this morning. Are there any questions with that?
Just a couple notes. The first, so these are just notes, I'm going to propose that they're all accepted. But the Board of Property Tax Appeals, there's, you know, kind of the concept that it's the Board of Values Appeals. So just the terminology, you know, that's legislative item coming up. So interesting historical reason, it's called the Tax Appeals. People sometimes don't understand what's going on there. So there's a proposed list of names. And then also, the date of meeting minutes on the 23rd, just Gilchrist, the city of Gil, the town of Gilchrist, unincorporated, is G-I-L-C-H-R-I-S-T, not E-S-T. So that'll be a simple edit. With that, I'll move consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
I just did want to highlight the reappointments and involvement of several citizen members in our housing authority, which is, I think, one of the more successful ones in the state. We've actually built quite a few different affordable housing projects under the desuspices of this over the last 10 years. And these people work, have worked, or are continuing to work on that. Appreciate that.
And I'll acknowledge that also, our housing authority is pretty amazing, you know, because it's tax credits, it's housing vouchers, but it's also development. And when they decide to develop, they just really knock it out of the park. We've got examples of that in all of our cities in Deschutes County. So I'd really like to thank them for their work and welcome. Melissa Valdez is going to be the new person appointed.
And I would like to add one clarification that was not changed in our minutes for the 16th. Quite a bit of, oh, what is the word? News articles have been about Thornburg. And actually, what we approved that day was the site plan, and the site plan included only one golf course. So this is something that has been around since 2005, and it included one golf course, because I've read where we approve like three golf courses, and everything's going to have water, and that isn't what we approved at all. So I just, I did want to make that public statement so people are aware. So Commissioner DeBon?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
I vote yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, thank you. We have our first action item, which is Cody Smith. Would you like to join us, please?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
For the record, Cody Smith, county engineer with the Deschutes County Road Department. So the road department solicited bid documents for the Tumalo Road, Tumalo Place Intersection Improvement Project. The project includes constructing a roundabout at the intersection of Tumalo Road and Tumalo Place. Tumalo Place, for those of you not familiar, is essentially the southbound on and off ramp for Highway 97 at Deschutes Junction. Department advertised for bids starting on September 9th. We opened bids on September 30th. We received six bids for this project. Before you this morning is the Notice of Intent to Award, the contract to Markham &amp; Sons in the amount of $1,024,529.65. Adoption of the Notice of Intent to Award will start a one-week protest period for interested parties to submit protests to the award. If no protests are received within that period, the contract will be awarded administratively. The work on this project might be starting late this fall. We haven't really, we've talked, discussed the schedule with this contractor yet. The department, we put this project out to bid here in the fall because we wanted to take advantage of the very favorable bid climate we have right now. We did set this project up so the contractor could have the option of starting this fall. There's a detour road that has to be built as part of the project that could go in this fall. But all that said, we're not certain yet if our contractor intends to start this fall, or maybe wants to take things off in the spring after the winter weather's gone. Either way, we anticipate the project will be completed by June 30th of 21. The total project estimated cost presently, including engineering, right-of-way, and construction, is $1,532,000. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the board.
Thank you, Cody. It was nice to see that five of the bids were from Deschutes County. And actually, the awarded bid is from Deschutes. So that was excellent news.
Yeah, I guess just one thing to say about that. We did have one KNE Excavating, we did have one bidder, their main office in Salem. I would point out, though, that KNE Excavating, they have a, quite a presence in central Oregon. They actually have a yard here. All of their staff that works on their projects over here are central Oregon residents. So when you look at it that way, I mean, you know, everyone that bid on this really that it was going to be putting central Oregon residents to work and, for the most part, keeping the money here. But yeah, certainly glad to see a local contractor get this and keep as much of our capital funds here going into our local economy.
Yes, it's great to know the money is just circulating around Deschutes County. So that's good news. Any other comments?
I had a quick question. On it, we hear the cost of some of the roundabouts, I hear kind of thrown around more of the tune of $3 million and $4 million. Is this, why is this so much lower than that? And I think it's a great thing, but I was curious how it comes in so much lower.
Well, I think there's certainly going to be a difference between a roundabout on our rural county road system compared to whether it's a roundabout within the city of Bend, where, you know, they're dealing with a lot more utility conflicts, issues regarding access to businesses, providing for pedestrian routes, those sorts of things. And similarly, if we're talking about a roundabout on the state highway system, where whether the roundabout has to be built to somewhat larger scale or other things. So, you know, prior to our Old Ben Redmond Highway-Tumalo Road intersection, we were just kind of a ballpark number for a roundabout on the county road, on the county road system. We were looking at about $2.5 million, because that's kind of close to what we experienced with our Palbut Highway, Alfalfa Market, Neff Road Roundabout Project in 2017. I think since then, I think the contracting community is going to dial this in. Obviously, you know, the prices on some items has gone down. Again, we're operating in a more favorable bid climate, fairly good competition. So number of different factors there. But ultimately, yeah, we wouldn't anticipate a single lane roundabout on our county road system to be $3 million or more.
But what, have you already got the price for the Tumalo Reservoir Road, Old Ben Redmond Highway? I drove by it the other day, and I was wondering, what's that estimated at?
Oh, for the Old Ben Redmond Highway-Tumalo Road Roundabout, right now, our estimate for that project is about $1.7 million, all in. So engineering, right-of-way, and the road improvement. So the construction contract on that project is about $1.2 million. Engineering was relatively the same as what we experienced on this project, about $350,000. Big difference on that one is there was a lot more road alignment, realignment work that needed to occur.
Yeah.
And also on that one, we're dealing with four legs of the intersection, all being county roads. With this project, Tumalo Road-Tumalo Place, there's only three legs that are county roads, and then the fourth leg is a private driveway into the Three Sisters Seventh Day Adventist Academy.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Well, with that, I'll move Chair's signature of document number 2020-576, Notice of Intent to Award Contract for the Tumalo Road-Tumalo Place Intersection Improvement Project, to Markham &amp; Sons LLC.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Commissioner DeBon?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Vote yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Cody, for joining us today. All right, so we are now at our COVID update for today, October 7th. So Nahad, would you like to join us?
I do, at this moment, I did want to recognize that we just received notice from Heather Keisner that she will be leaving Deschutes County after an amazing 13 years. She has been such a wonderful, wonderful part of our healthcare community, and I personally wished her all the best of luck. I know wherever she's going to go, she's going to make a positive difference. So she will leave a big hole here, and, but I thank her for those 13 years. It's, Heather is an amazing person, and all the best.
I agree.
I agree also. I hope we can replace her positive optimism, which is always a good smile we always see with her.
You hear it in her voice. She has a smile in her voice. So that is...
That's too bad.
I know. She will be definitely missed.
Missed.
Okay, Nahad, can you follow that?
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Yes, that, yeah, it was, I had a difficult weekend, I have to admit. And then at some point, I had to, after hearing that news, and then at some point, I had to basically remind myself that this is a great move for Heather, and I should be happy for her and not be selfish about it. And then remind myself that also Heather has, and her team have really built a, built a strong foundation in our community and our health services as well. So we are definitely left, there's definitely a strong legacy that she's leaving behind, and we're grateful for that. So I'm not sure if we are live streaming yet or not. I'm not sure.
We are.
We are? Okay.
Yes, we are.
Wonderful, wonderful, great. Thank you again for inviting us. For the record, my name is Nahad Sadrazodi. I'm the Director of Public Health for Deschutes County Health Services. I have with me Dr. Richard Fawcett, our Health Officer, and of course, as always, Dr. George Conway, who's the Director of Health Services, and I believe he's available on Zoom. Many thanks to Jenny Faith for the great data analysis. Also, as always, I would like to express my gratitude to all of our health service staff for their dedication, compassion, and meticulous work. I can say without a doubt that our investigators and contact tracers, as you are aware, commissioners, are one of the key reasons we are still able to contain this virus in our community and somehow still enjoy a bit of semi-normalcy in our lives. So for this week's quiz, Commissioner, there, may I give you the floor in terms of announcing the prize for this week?
Yes. Well, let's hope that we don't have winners on all sides. This is not where we give soccer focus to everyone. Several of my boys were victims of that, and really, you know, you win and you lose, and you learn to work harder. So I hope we have only one answer, and we will be giving gift certificates out today from Lone Pine Coffee. So, and it will be the first five. So in case there are 100 or something, you need to be one of the first five to get the right answer, Nahad. I'm sure Whitney is watching closely.
Wonderful. I think you can tell I'm a middle child, right? Because I want everyone to win.
Yes, you are. Yes, we can tell, we can tell.
Like my wife.
I'm not sure who is, are one of the commissioners willing to kindly read this out loud, or would you like me to do it?
Why don't you go ahead?
Sure. So what are some of the, for this week's quiz, and I'd like to remind the community members to, if you're kindly watching this on live stream Facebook, on deschute.org site, then please insert the correct answer, and just one answer, into the comments section. So this week's quiz, what are some of the drivers or factors behind acquiring and spreading the virus SARS-CoV-2 among younger adults aged 20 to 29 years? And the options are A, occupational, such as frontline and high-exposure settings; B, behavioral, such as masks usage, distance, watching distance, and practicing good hygiene; C, biological, such as having an effective immune system; or D, which is A and B only. But this is the quiz for this week. So before we get into the numbers, just want to remind the community of this excellent resource that's available on deschute.org website, which helps visualize the data that we report out during these meetings, as well as through newsletters and our usual media. Moving on to the first graph in terms of the numbers, commissioners, this is the cumulative numbers that we have been presenting in the past. And as of last evening, we have a total of 928 cases and 12 deaths since March 11th, when we had the first case reported. And just to remind the community again, that the flatter the line, the slower the rate of change, and the steeper the slope, for example, what we saw in July and what we've seen in the last few weeks, the faster the rate of change. Commissioner Henderson, you asked a really good question last week, you may recall, around the active cases and basically how long they've remained active. And our epidemiologists and team spent some time checking the records, and it appears that vast majority of them have been active since the beginning of September.
That's as of, like, say, today, the 100, the ones that aren't released from isolation, most of them go back to the start of September? Or are you saying that none go back before that?
Yeah, yes, Commissioner. I mean, I think you asked a really excellent question, and we looked into it. And once we remove the numbers of those who have been released and the deaths, so the active cases, for those that we have data, not all data, obviously, some of the data need to be cleaned up, but for vast majority of them, basically, starting September, they're still recovering. And that, again, speaks to the behavior of this virus and the long haulers and some of the issues we've been discussing around the residual impact of acquiring this virus.
Just so I'm clear, you're saying there aren't very many that go back before September?
Of those, yeah, of those who have not been released yet, we do have some cases that go back to August and July. But we have to admit that there might be some data-related issues there. So we're looking into data cleanup, because not, the requirement is not necessarily to follow up with each case earlier than a specified period of time. So we need to do some data cleanup. But that's only around 10% or 15%. Vast majority, around 85% or so, are those that I mentioned, go back to September, beginning of September, Commissioner.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the question. So moving to the next slide, this is the number of cases by week, and we have some glimmer of hope here, because we see in the week of 9/27 to 10/3, the new cases were approximately the same as the week prior. So in fact, one less reported. So that's, I'm hoping that that's the beginning of a trend, and that trend going downwards. But of course, it's too early to tell. This week so far, we have had 23 cases reported on Monday and Tuesday. Of course, the couple of school metrics are on our minds these days. One is around weekly case rates per 100,000 population. We have inched above the 30 per 100,000 metric, which allows for some exceptions, for example, K through 3, returning to in-person classes. We are, of course, way above the 10 per 100,000 case rate. So I'm hoping that this week is the start of a trend of going downwards, but of course, it's too early to tell at this point. This next slide, commissioners, shows how our cases are linked or categorized. The good news is that in September, we remain below 30% for sporadic cases or community-acquired cases, or often we call them known known linkages. And of course, as a reminder for our community members, really, the more we're able to link and categorize the cases, the better we, we're in a position to identify and contain, identify cases, contacts, and contain this virus. identify cases, contacts, and contain this virus. So we definitely want this proportion to be as low as possible. For October, I wouldn't read too much into it, it's still very early, and usually when new cases come in, it takes us a few days to start making the linkages. So I think it's too early to tell at this point. I think in the next week or so, we're going to have a better sense of the proportion of cases that are not identified. Commissioner, this week, I would like to maybe shift our focus a bit on the adolescent age category. This slide shows cases broken down by age groups, and I'm highlighting this particular age group of 10 to 19, because what we're seeing is that since July, where we had fairly low numbers, since then, actually, the numbers have more than, nearly increased by 500%. So let's say five, by fivefold at this point. And I think the reasons are not rocket science, right? It's mostly behavioral versus, let's say, the 20, up to 49-year-olds, which are probably both behavioral and occupational factors. But for this particular age category, we are seeing an increase in the, in the number of cases, which is quite concerning, especially in the context of, let's say, school setting.
Sounds like you might have shared part of the answer to today's question just now in passing, if people were paying attention.
I did mention I'm a middle child, so I want to keep everyone happy.
So Nahad, on this example that you gave, so you've given several of these in your updates the last few weeks, is this an actual one or just one we can imagine happened?
Are you talking about the story that I'm about to tell, Commissioner?
Oh, I thought you'd already told it because you were on to the, sorry, you were on to the next slide, so.
Commissioner, I may have switched slides, like I said.
Oh, okay.
Trust me, and so, thank you for catching that. So this story is not, is not fictional, this is a true story, but of course, we have to mask the story to the best of our ability to make sure we don't compromise anyone's ideas.
And is it Deschutes County-based?
Yes, Commissioner.
Have the other stories you've given us also been Deschutes County stories?
Absolutely, Commissioner.
Oh, interesting.
So this story, I'm going to just read out it loud quickly, you have obviously read it already since it was on your slide. "A group of teenagers had parties on regular basis, there were additional and different guests at each party. The initial case was not forthcoming with close contact information and likely didn't share his positive status with the other partygoers. Additional cases associated with the parties began to surface. Two weeks into this outbreak, and with the cooperation of additional cases, we were able to link 11 positive COVID cases and more than 30 close contacts resulting from the initial positive case and the social gatherings." And we put here to be continued because, because this particular outbreak is still ongoing and we're still finding some additional cases as, as we're going through our investigation and contact tracing.
But Nahad.
This is, yes, Commissioner?
Nahad, we have a much more tragic story in Deschutes County right now. We just lost two, two young girls at Sisters High School last week. They were going to a party and they had a horrific accident and three young women died. One of them was from California. So, you know, we have things going on in our community that, I know that Sisters and Sisters High School are so horribly impacted by that, I really had to say something. It was incredibly tragic and they'd already lost another young woman who had just graduated from Sisters High, I think about two weeks ago, and so they've, they've actually lost three young women in Sisters in the last month. So, you know, we're talking about COVID, but I mean, there's, there's a larger tragedy out there right now for my home community and I, I do want to acknowledge that at this moment. You know, I, I don't know what you can say, did any of these people, did the COVID people end up in the hospital? I realize kids are kids, but our kids need structure, they need to get back to school, they need their sports, and our kids have been shut down, I think it's seven months now, seven months, and something has got to be done for our, the youth of Deschutes County.
Commissioner, thank you for sharing that tragic news. I appreciate that you mentioned it and it is very tragic news. I cannot imagine what their parents and loved ones are going through right now, and I cannot imagine what the community is going through. So I appreciate that you put the spotlight on that.
Well, I'm just putting the spotlight on getting our kids back to something normal that, you know, for their entire life, they were doing their sports, they were doing their studying, they were seeing their friends, and for seven months, it's been seven months, they, you know, their whole world has been turned upside down.
I didn't know at what point we were going to talk about this, but since you've kind of opened the door. I went to the parents' rally trying to reopen the schools on, when was it?
Monday.
Monday. They all go to, yeah, so, and I went, I didn't, I just went and talked to a variety of parents, it turned out I knew three of, three different sets, but I didn't know a lot of them. And the stories I heard about the challenges they're having, I mean, there's the challenges within the families for the parents specifically, there's the challenges with the kids. One, sort of, one parent talked about the kind of mental or emotional challenges, there two, two of their six kids had had, had really very tough over the last few months with regard to no socializing. Another one talked about how awful it is trying to get a child who's learning challenged or disabled to get, do online learning. I think what you're really highlighting is we live in a society with lots of risk and the driving is another, you know, and I saw the, last night on the news, there was a lot about those stories you mentioned, and Sisters. I think it, I guess the question I have to our health officials here today, we're trying to suffocate a virus, and it's become the sole kind of focus of everything, and curing a virus is what we typically try to do, and changing patterns to be less likely to get the virus, but it can't be done in lieu of everything else, and I think that's what you're saying. I, I always think about it as an older person, people say, well, aren't you really worried about the virus? I said, well, that's one of about 10 health things I'm worried about. I'm worried about my eyesight, you know, I'm worried about my heart, I'm worried about my, you know, a whole variety of things, you know, that you worry about as you get older, it's just added to the list. It's not the only thing that we as a society worry about. And then you worry about all your family members and all the things they're up against, kids driving and are they, are they careful? You know, that's a big one. I mean, drug and, you know, alcohol abuse among younger people or older, I mean, I think that's the big million-dollar question to our health officials, when are we going to change that focus? Because this downtick we think we might be getting into could be an uptick, and it's like the schools, if they'd gotten organized, they could have started, and then it would have been harder to close them, you know, but they didn't, and that was a comment at the rally. So I'm, Kevin, I'm in favor of trying to do what we can to reopen and reestablish some of the norms of, that make our lives work, and is that kind of what yours, is that part of what you're thinking also? I mean.
We've got to get, our kids have got to get back to something normal. I talked to my sister who's a teacher, she spent, what, two days in a row, eight hours plus a day on Zoom. It's, it's not healthy, it's, it's just not healthy. I, I just, I feel so badly for the kids, though, I think they are being, you know, the kids that were seniors were shortchanged, and now the kids that are seniors again are being shortchanged.
Well, we're possibly missing an entire year of
Yes.
Normal learning over this virus, whereas we've had even bigger crises in our history that didn't, that, you know, really didn't have the same effect, yes.
And I would say that, yeah, family and friends need to just take a moment, pay attention to your, you know, your state of mind, as in, people are driving very aggressively right now, you turn on the radio, you hear some very divisive political speak, it gets everybody agitated and angry, driving faster, and it's not a healthy environment, and we just need to back off a little bit, take a deep breath, pay attention, look out for each other at this point in time. It's going to be like this for a few more weeks in the political season, but I agree, you know, there's multiple things we need to watch out for. COVID is that unique novel thing that we're dealing with in our society, but there's other compounding factors right now also. So as I say, for friends and family, please just look out for each other, slow down, take a deep breath, think about what you're doing, don't use speed or drugs or any of these things right now excessively, and think about what you're doing, too.
But you think about our state's policy, and they had the marijuana shops open the whole time. And we had record marijuana sales and record alcohol sales, and watching Facebook, all my dear friends were all like drinking every day practically, it seemed like, whenever, and I was like, oh my gosh, you know, what are we doing to our whole culture and our society? And, you know, we should have been telling people, okay, go for walks, but no, that wasn't the message, it was stay home, save lives, and it should have been, get a, get a couple walks a day because
And take care of yourself, yeah.
You need fresh air, you need to like go outside and, you know, enjoy.
So for the COVID update, Nahad, I'm going to have a request, and it, either a few words can be mentioned today or next week, so basically, kind of a layman's medical introduction to what COVID is again, you know, because we are slicing and dicing numbers here, but it'd be good just for, you know, a doctor type, so possibly Dr. Fawcett or Dr. Conway just explaining, you know, a lower lung infection, what it does to your body, how people are responding to, how doctors help respond to it, when it gets complicated, when it doesn't get complicated, do we know about immunity, you know, so some of that stuff I'd love a little update on. So as I say, if it's not appropriate for today, that'd be good for next week, too. Just to remind us what we're really dealing with here.
Thank you, Nahad.
Back to you.
Check it out in, you know, somewhere where it needed to go, because our community is definitely, our children are definitely hurting.
But, you know, and with that, it, what I'm continuing to worry about is I don't know when it changes, that's what I can't, you know, we're all saying, oh, once it's, once we've smothered it or starved it, what if we don't? And this, do we go on for a year of this and do, you know, all, all of these things continue to be lost?
Yeah, there's other big picture items we can at least be thinking about.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, for that exchange. We took note of the Commissioner DeBoens' request, maybe towards the end, Dr. Fawcett is here, Dr. Conway is of course available, they'd be happy to maybe share a few words. So just moving forward perhaps, I think I will now give the floor to Dr. Fawcett to help us wrap up the slides.
Good morning, Commissioners, thank you for inviting me. This slide here looks again at the numbers of cases and tests, week to week, so we're focusing here on the week of September 27th to October 3rd, and we, you know, these, these tests are tallied by when they were collected, so there is a bit of...
We might have lost audio.
Did we lose audio?
Oh, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can now, yes.
Okay, terrific. So it seems that the number of positive cases per week, I'm sorry, the number, cases and tests have plateaued and seem to be stabilized and maybe are decreasing a bit. So between September 27th and October 3rd, that's the last column there in this graph, we've had 48, 48 positive tests, whereas we had the week before, 74, so that's quite a nice decrease. Of course, some of these tests are, all the data's not in here because this, this is being tallied by the data collection, so that could change, but our hope is that we've plateaued in terms of this upswing we've been seeing in the weekly number of positive tests. Also, the number of total tests have gone up a bit, I think that's encouraging, it might just be that people are concerned, we of course have more cases the last week and therefore more contacts, so, but our percent test positivity went down to 2.74% for this past week, the 27th of September through October 3rd. Moving on.
Dr. Fawcett, I noticed that the hospitalization for the month of September was 3% every week until the very last, and you popped it up, it popped up to 4%?
Well, right, I think I was sliding ahead there, I'm sorry. Right, okay, so I was ahead of the slides here, I apologize for that. So looking at the county cases for, so we have all the data in for September, that I think the breakdown in terms of the age demographics was pretty similar to what we have been seeing compared to the springtime, in that, you know, we've been seeing more cases in younger individuals and less, less cases in those who are over 60. I still feel that we see this parallel between less hospitalizations and having more cases in the younger age groups, but 4% hospitalizations of Deschutes County residents is the lowest we've, we've had since May, so that, that's encouraging, so we have less hospitalizations.
I just thought it was interesting that the last week could pop it up to 4% because we were at three for, what, three or four weeks?
Okay. Right, well, you know, again, I think we had a few more, we'll get to that slide, but we've had a few more hospitalizations, not, not many more, but the overall trend for the hospitalization in St. Charles Bend has gone up just a little bit. And that, that tends to be the pattern, we see more cases and then wait a week or two and we see more hospitalizations. So there always is, seems to be this lag between positive cases in the county and then hospitalizations. So I think the reason it went up from 3% to 4% is probably because we were having more cases throughout the last part of September. Yeah, okay, good. All right, so then we, okay, did you go to the other slide? I'm sorry, I skipped a slide and I went backwards, I apologize for that. Okay. So this reflects the school metrics here, and as I mentioned, for the week of September 27th to October 3rd, the positive test rate went down to 2.74%, so that, that's encouraging. We have not been above 5%, which is the school metric, for quite some time now, so that's encouraging. As Nahad mentioned earlier, the other metric of 10 cases per 100,000, we're still exceeding that, of course, which is part of the challenge here to try to achieve that, we have the L2.
Dr. Fawcett, one question I had is that with regard, we've done, been doing, I think almost three times as much testing as was required when we got to the reopening, up to 1,700 last week, and what's the, going to be, I didn't hear the governor's speech yesterday, but what's really the point of more testing with regard to everything else? Is it, I mean, will it, might, does it lower positivity, does it identify spreading people faster, or what's the, and I, and then can you give some comments about the rollout of that, or if, you know, you, someone, whoever knows about that? It sounds like over the state of Oregon, it won't be that much to us, maybe a, but anyway.
Yeah. I think Dr. Conway is planning to talk more about testing and what we might do in the future. I think, I mean, to answer the question though, for right now, it seems that testing, more testing can be more useful, and of course, it depends on how we use it. We want reliable tests, we want tests that are consistent, we're comparing, you know, if we're using a rapid test, we understand what the false negativity, that false positivity rates are, so we understand the limitations of each test we use, but... But in general, if we have reliable and approved tests, I think we're going to be able to make better decisions about how we reopen even schools. Certainly, that's being used in professional sports now, I think, fairly effectively to keep the athletes safe. So again, if we focus on that test positivity rate, that's a pretty solid number. I do realize that if we're looking at certain specific patient populations, that it does skew things a bit. But I can't imagine we would ever get away from testing symptomatic individuals, so that will probably always be consistent. But, you know, certainly contacts in schools in a classroom, I think we do want to be testing those potential close contacts. I think that it's wonderful news when we get these negative tests back, especially when we look at close contacts. So does that help, or I, I'm making sure I'm answering your question?
Yeah, no, I think it does, I think I understand what you're saying. So it just seems like it's almost a, I mean, we see, it's because with the president getting it, we learn a lot about how much testing they do, say, in the White House or in Washington DC, they're testing, it seems like, all the time. And I guess they can afford to do that, but it's, it seems like it's, there's so many people and so, you know, in the state and there's, each day is a new day, and so, you know, 4 million Oregonians and each day is a new day. So it's almost an impossible task to really, it's not like taking your temperature every day if you wanted to or something.
I think we would love to have more consistency, predictability, you know, new tests come out and hopefully they're not more expensive, hopefully they're quicker turnarounds, but again, that they're more sensitive and specific. But that's, that's part of the problem, when you listen to what's happening in the news is that you have a new test come out and it's only recommended to use for symptomatic individuals and not asymptomatic. So I think that gets very complicated, so I agree with that. But gosh, if we could just get to a point where we have something that's affordable, with a fairly rapid turnaround time, and it's reliable, it seems like that's a good goal to get.
Yeah.
To accomplish that for the future.
Yeah.
If I could interject, George Conway Health Services, I'm actually going to give a brief talk about testing and the new potential testing regimes immediately after this.
Okay, super, thank you.
So we'll move on, I think, to the slide. So this is tracking hospitalizations at St. Charles. And here, for, in the graph, we have four people admitted as of yesterday, and it also was up this morning, four patients at St. Charles Bend with COVID-19. We had several days earlier this week, and to the weekend, we had five. But I think five was the highest since our last update. So that seems to be stabilizing a bit. I think I mentioned in September that there was a bit of an uptick to about six cases, but that was the highest for September. So that's encouraging, I think.
But how many of those are Deschutes County residents?
Right, so for this morning, two of the four are Deschutes County residents. And that's been fairly consistent, I mean, just, my memory is it's about 50%, maybe two-thirds, or something like that. Typically, they're Deschutes County residents, usually at least 50%. And just to shout out, to remind us to catch up on immunizations for kids and for adults, we definitely want to think about getting our influenza vaccine. We don't want to be having a surge in influenza cases the same time as COVID-19 cases, which will certainly challenge resources, clinics and hospitals. So we'll get our flu shot as soon as we can. Thank you.
Okay, so just to wrap up our portion of the presentation, excuse me. Just a couple of key messages, commissioners, you're fully aware, just for our maybe committee members. And I go back to our Deschutes values and making sure that we don't compromise our values and beliefs during a crisis. And it's actually linked to the, a bit of update I gave around the transmission we're seeing among adolescents. So adolescent group. So I think there are a couple of points there. One is that I really want to encourage our community and remind us that there is a cause and effect here, that our actions and choices make a difference, a difference in terms of acquiring this virus and transmitting it to others, the choices we make around wearing masks and social distancing and what have you. There's also a second, I think, dimension to this. And from what I'm hearing from our contact tracers, investigators, and what I'm reading sometimes in the news, is that there is somehow this phenomena of COVID shame. And I just wanted to really remind, especially amongst the adolescent groups. And I just wanted to remind all of us that, yes, we will take actions to make sure that we can prevent getting this virus, because it's not just about dying from this virus, it's the residual impact of this virus on our health. I mean, those long haulers, we know that there are some data that show that it could go months and months for one-third, up to 40% of cases, where they're still trying to recover from the residual impact of this virus on their well-being. Not only physical well-being, but even their mental well-being. So certainly, we want to prevent it. But having said that, despite all of our efforts to prevent it, if, God forbid, we do acquire this virus, there is no shame in that. And the community needs to understand that, and our young brothers and sisters need to understand that as well, that having COVID is, there's no shame in that. And just be forthright with the information, make sure that you cooperate with the contact tracers and investigators so that we can just contain the virus and move on. So that goes really to our Deschutes values and beliefs on this. There is this 2080 rule that we are seeing around the transmission of this virus. So in other words, really, the transmission does not appear to be somehow linear. It seems to have a few, it seems to have more of a cluster sort of pattern to it, where 20%, roughly, I mean, this is not exact numbers, but roughly 20% of those acquiring the virus and transmitting it are really transmitting it to 80% of the cases. So I think this 2080 rule, meaning 80% of the transmission is really occurring by 20% of the folks. And that cluster approach, I think, gives us a lens into how we can perhaps further contain this virus or eliminate it eventually. And that really does have to do, what we see, the association is around indoor spaces, poorly ventilated places, large gatherings, and long durations where people are interacting. So that's, I think, something to keep in mind. And it's never too late, despite the numbers going up, today, we can make some choices and decisions which will impact the trajectory of this virus. So it's never too late, there is a cause and effect here, and we can make some choices that change the course. And of course, as Dr. Fossett mentioned, that we cannot, you know, pile on the burden and pile on this crisis with other vaccine-preventable diseases, such as the flu and others. So please do get your vaccines, catch up yourselves, your children, so that we don't overburden the system here. So, yes, Commissioner?
I just wanted to say something. I spoke to someone in Bend this morning who was, grew up in India, and he actually lost his sister to polio. We really and truly do not want to bring polio back. And, you know, with people really having a hard time vaccinating, modern medicines, effects of vaccinations really has been, it has saved millions and millions of people's lives. And just, just having someone remind me of, you know, a death in his immediate family was really rather appropriate this morning. So, you know, please make sure your children are vaccinated. I believe it is 22 vaccinations from 0 to 18, according to your office, right? That's what I was told.
Mr. Dyer, thank you for mentioning that. This is Dr. Fossett, I just want to say a couple of things in response. I, you know, and Nahad has mentioned this before, too, but there have been periods in American history, just outside now, our generations here, even with my parents, you know, that's something they were aware of. But where, you know, back for World War II and in the 40s, where when they have polio outbreaks, that, you know, the communities were having to face some of the same challenges in terms of keeping distance from each other, you know, contact investigation. And just thankfully, so many of these diseases have been eradicated from this country, in some cases, the world, polio being a terribly frightening type of disease, which killed many younger individuals, often kids that lived in upper-middle-class communities, surprisingly. So it is, we, I guess, take, I think we do take for granted the fact that we don't have to deal with these these vaccine-preventable illnesses, measles and polio being two very important ones. So thank you for mentioning that, Mr. Dyer. I also wanted to just say briefly, too, that I want to add in terms of the burden for kids, this is a very difficult situation, I think, for all of us. I mean, many of us here have children. I want to just share a very brief vignette. This has happened in several different universities. And I think that this is important because of the case that Nahad presented today. The university that impacts my life basically had a very small segment of, and I'll be brief on this, very small segment of their student population come back for onsite, in-person learning. And it was mainly athletes and a few other select groups within the university, something like 10% of all students or less. Those students, in particular, the athletes, had a lot of parties. There were many, many parties, and there was an explosion in cases. The county health department was overwhelmed, they had to bring in law enforcement. It was just really actually quite embarrassing, to be honest. And so my feeling is, you know, my son is doing online learning. I'm thankful he wasn't asked to come back because, you know, it was not a safe environment, really, in that county during that time because of some of the behaviors, not just of the students, but of the coaches. So the kids need socialization, there's no question, they need online learning, there's no question about that. In terms of the, how they socialize, I hope that they can learn to be responsible. We all have to go through that as we grow up, like jeepers, you know? Some of the way these parties develop and what happens is disheartening. And I would say, being a physician, even last year, some of the cases we see in the hospital of addiction-related illness, heart valve infection, abscesses, withdrawal, death, just dying in the ICU, is just shocking because of substance abuse among our younger population, in our county and in the neighboring counties. Just seeing horrendous things with substance abuse and addiction. So these are very important issues, and they're multifactorial. It certainly makes sense that it's exacerbated by COVID-19, but it certainly isn't caused by it. So I just hope that the universities can be a little bit more responsible in how they bring back the students for in-person learning. So I know they're trying, and I think we're making some headway, so I wanted to add that, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fossett.
Thank you, Dr. Fossett, that's it. Could feel the passion in Dr. Fossett's voice, and I appreciated that, thank you, Dr. Fossett. So just, just to wrap up, I'm not sure if Whitney, Commissioner, you have any, do we have any winners this week? And everyone's a winner, by the way.
We know that, we were the medal child.
Here he goes again.
We've learned something very important today.
Everyone's a winner, so.
Yes, I'm sure we do.
Okay, so.
I don't know how many.
The answer, of course.
People answered D.
Yes, that is the correct answer.
Oh, good.
I answered D.
I circled D, there we go, good.
Need four more cups, two more cups of coffee.
But I wouldn't be surprised if six months from now, it comes back to haunt me and that we have some more information around the biological factors, because this is a new virus after all. And that's where some of the reactions and overreactions sometimes come from, is because when something's novel, we really don't know how it's going to be.
Well, I thought, Nahad, you were doing a trick question because the genetic and biological maybe has more to do with why they don't catch it, but you asked about transmission. And so I, so I thought you were trying to trick us, but anyway.
I'm beyond tricks at this point. So, no, you got, you all got the right answers, congratulations. And I hope there are some committee members who can benefit from those gift cards. I told my wife to contribute to that, so I hope she did. But I give the floor now to Dr. Conway. Thank you for inviting us again.
Congratulations to Joshua and Mariah for participating today and being the lucky winners. So, Dr. Conway, I see we have your presentation.
Yes, hello, commissioners, and actually, as transition, I will open my presentation in a moment, but I want to address actually three, well, two questions, and then it really was a third. And that is, Commissioner DeBones, your request that we provide a sort of basic COVID-19 basics review. I'd be happy to do that next week for the layperson. Commissioner Henderson, I think both explicit and implicit, and some of the things you said was the, about what, you know, what is it we're trying to do? And I think, I certainly heard what you said, Commissioner Dyer, about disruptions, et cetera. So the underlying basic strategy right now, because there are vaccines which are showing promise, but they're not in the pipeline yet, is we're trying our very best to contain cases of the virus as much as possible until we have a substantial portion of the population vaccinated with an effective vaccine. The horizon for that does not appear at this time to be likely, where you have something approaching herd immunity with widespread vaccination, and this is still speculative, but it does not appear likely until most likely sometime next spring or summer. So we're probably looking at substantial constraints on various types of human interactions. And what we may have to do is tinker with which ones we constrain at one time. And I think that was the underlying substance of the governor's announcements. I heard this morning, I don't think it was covered in the talk last night, but they are going to revisit the school reopening criteria per what I heard this morning. But I think in order to do that, there probably will be other things that will need to be more constrained. And then the other thing is, I do want to thank you, Commissioner Dyer, for your reminder about vaccination and the necessity of maintaining vaccination. Actually, I'm old enough, I had classmates in school that were badly afflicted by their polio. I was fortunate enough to report myself in the early 50s. I'm going, with your permission, I'm going to change to sharing. And the subject, hopefully you can see slides now?
Yes, we can.
The subject of this is, so we have a very recent opportunity, and it actually, in some ways, may, if you will, the, some of the questions that were asked today. And that is that there's a newly released, very high-volume of tests from Abbott Corporation, a testing system called Binax Now. And that is, so this is just a reminder, and maybe this addresses this sort of basic science request, and we'll try to have more discipline about going over basics. So there's, there's three major types of tests available. The one that we've been using primarily since the beginning of the outbreak, the pandemic, is called a plum raised chain reaction or PCR test. And that is something where we use a multiplying device to increase the number of the type of RNA, that's genetic material within the virus. And that can be done either by something called PCR, which is a very demanding process, or there's other ways of amplifying parts of the genome. So the first generation, we're all PCR, they're slow. The second generation is a molecular test, but it's amplified by the means, so it's faster. And there are point-of-care tests available like that, such as the Cepheid point-of-care test, and then another product from Abbott, which is ID Now. The second type of testing, which is just now becoming available in quantity, and that's why we're talking about it today, is an antigen test. An antigen test is a little more straightforward, but they're a little harder to develop because of that. And it detects one of the characteristic proteins, often one of the proteins on the outside of a virus. outside of a virus, but it has to be a characteristic protein. So, for example, coronavirus, which has that name because it has the sort of spiky receptors on the outside, so then in the profile, it looks like a crown, those receptors and the key parts of it that are characteristic of the virus are one of the things that can be used to have a targeted test to see whether or not that characteristic protein is there. The advantage of doing that is that it's only there in quantity when the virus is replicating, and they set the detection threshold that way. So, PCR virus is a little, is able to test for a little bit earlier, possibly as much as a half day or a day during the course of infection, but it will persist to show infection for some time after the time that somebody has rapidly replicating virus and therefore able to transmit it. The antigen test is a tiny bit later, but it does not persist for very long at all past the infectivity period. So, it's actually a better test if you're screening for who is infectious, and of course, the whole point of doing all this is to prevent transmission. The third type of test, which we heard about, because they're very easy to develop, we heard about them early in the epidemic, is an antibody or serology test. And that checks for chemicals called antibodies that the body produces to specifically constrain by one way or another the progress of a pathogen in the body. So, these are specific to the virus or bacterium or foreign body, but they're only elaborated after some time, so they really only show a history of infection. So, those are the three, the three sort of basic tests that we're still dealing with. Yesterday, and I don't know, I wasn't able to join the, listen to the press conference, but OHA pushed a set of slides to us shortly after. Governor Brown had a press conference yesterday announcing rapid testing, and each of the county health departments had had a briefing either late last week or very early this week about this. It was just a logistical briefing, that we have these kids, what are we going to do with them? So, that outlined a very, I'd say, limited testing strategy using this new product, and that is initial distribution to emphasize using tests in outpatient settings, with a robust testing strategy. And that's initially testing of all symptomatic persons and close contacts and cases. And the point of doing this with this assay is to greatly increase the number of fast tests, point-of-care tests, so that people can be tested as soon as they're symptomatic, which is the time that they're most likely to be infectious. Unfortunately, the time they're most likely to be infectious is just before they're symptomatic in some persons, but definitely near the beginning they're on site of symptoms. So, you don't have to wait three days or four days to get the results, or to feel ill enough that they have to make maybe a special trip to the doctor, and we'll talk about that, too. The number of tests are not enough to perform routine serial testing, and it remains, well, it says no evidence from OHA. I think there's some evidence for that as a rational public health strategy. As the test performance is assayed and pandemic needs evolve, it may be modified, and we will continue to test vulnerable populations, as you heard during the CARES Act discussions, which include homeless, migrants, seasonal farm workers, and communities of color. What happened just early last week was that state health departments, and then we were copied, I think, the next day, were informed it would be very large quantities of this new assay shipped to states and to other entities, such as there were about 100,000 sent to disaster operations in California, Oregon, and then the southeast for the tropical storms, the fires in California, Oregon. 2.2 million directly to nursing homes or long-term care facilities. So, that's a separate process that's going through a slightly different means directly to those, into other types of assisted living facilities, 400,000 HBCUs, and about 300,000 Indian tribes. And then, there were 6.5 million tests were sent directly to states and territories. And Oregon's tranche of those was about 80,000 of these little kits. And the kits are, actually, I'll go back to this, you see the kit is a card, a swab, and a little bit of a liquid. So, this kit, what, the method of recovering a specimen is much less invasive than the very long nasopharyngeal swab that people have endured for the piece that was the best way getting, at least early on in the epidemic, best way getting a clinical specimen for the PCR. This is just taken with a shorter swab, it's just used, it's rotated a few times just in one nostril and just the first inch of it, so it's not stuck way up anybody's nose, it's just twisted five times, and then it's very readily plated in this little area here on the, on the card. And then there's this, what's called a developer, it's a solvent chemical, it's added, and within 15 seconds, what you get is, in that tiny area, you'll either see the pink and purple persist, but no new line, which is negative. And then, if it's positive, you'll see a second colored line. So, this is a much more straightforward reading, happens much more quickly. One of the highest goals in this, or highest priorities in this, is to deploy this for the management, rapid management response for K-12 and higher education to support the testing of symptomatic students and staff and outbreak investigations. So, in higher education, this will be done through student health centers, et cetera, and of course, OSU and OSU Cascades are already involved in a routine periodic testing with a more sensitive assay. One of the pieces of news we got is that this will also be integrated into K-12 school-based health centers, and that that will occur in partnership with community health providers and mobile units. Now, Deschutes County is very well-equipped to jump in with this model, because we, if you will, cooperate six school-based health centers within Deschutes County, in Sisters, Ensworth Elementary, in Ben, Redmond High, Lynch Elementary, Lapine, and in, in Bend High. And then, we also, at the request of Klamath County, and because it's closer to facilities and the Lapine Community Health Centers, Gilchrist, just in Klamath County. The Sisters School-Based Health Center is operated by St. Charles System, Ensworth, Redmond High, Bend High, and Lynch Elementary are, the medical services are provided by Mosaic Medical, or one of our co-location partners. And then, Lapine Community Health Center provides services in Lapine as well as in Gilchrist.
So, Dr. Conway, when you, I think you said the number was 80,000 tests coming to the state of Oregon, so how many will come to Deschutes County?
Yes, yes. The request that we have pending, we just submitted yesterday, within those parameters, is 6,000 tests, 5,000 of which will be for the model which we're working on developing for how to make them available for a variety of groups, including the school-based health centers, et cetera. But 500 each will go directly to Mosaic Medical and Lapine Community Health Center, the two FQHCs in the county. They're all being received by the health department, but we'll pass along 500 immediately to both of them. And if we have the plan worked out, we may pass along quite a few more to them right away. But we're also looking at other ways to provide rapid testing, for example, other high-risk groups, potentially high-risk occupational settings, other settings such as homeless shelters, Shepherd's House, we've already been talking to Dr. Jacobs, the medical director there, and then other shelters. So, there's a variety of other potential outreach opportunities, and we're working through those right now. We only found out about this Wednesday evening that we got our first word on this, so this is still work in progress. The overall allocation of this was to counties by population, so we were offered a little less tests than what we're getting, and I asked whether or not we could have some additional ones, so we could start piloting, providing outreach to the particularly high-risk settings such as homeless and shelter operations. So, you see, there's through the COVID-19 Response and Recovery Unit, which is, that's jointly OHA-DHS, they're hoping to pass through 16,000, 80,000 tests per week going forward. And then, counties are getting anywhere from 500 to 5,000 tests each. So, we were able, because we've been involved in trying to model some sort of leading-edge things, we were allocated a larger portion of these so that we can get moving on some of these models, so we're trying to move very quickly for that. And then, there's also direct, as I mentioned, to all the federally qualified health centers, 500 to each, and then going to rural hospitals. And then, we're, just for simplicity, because it all has to be shipped, we'll receive the ones for the two FQHCs in our county. And then, there's going to be some reserve to hold back a portion of the tests for outbreaks following winter surge. Now, I need to be clear about the sort of parameters for our approach, and once again, it's just a work in progress. We're in the process of discussing this with the three medical sponsors. We had a, Mosaic Medical and St. Charles are routinely involved in our testing work groups, we had a meeting that was partially devoted to this, it'll be done Friday, and then Sarah Holloway has reached out and had two discussions I played with Lapine Community Health Center. We're meeting first thing tomorrow morning with the school districts in a meeting that we had already scheduled, that Mr. Sotirzodi, Mr. Sotirzodi had scheduled, Nahad, to meet with the school districts about their general needs regarding COVID-19, and we will talk some about possible testing strategies. The caveat right now is it's not clear whether rapid test deployment will assist in reopenings or only once reopenings occur within the existing metrics. And as I mentioned, the primary focus that was rolled out by OHA yesterday is to test symptomatics to get a very quick response in outbreaks. So, basically, school-based outbreaks would typically occur when there's people in school. It's also not yet clear, there's a lot of discussion about using this test, not only for symptomatic, but also for asymptomatic persons as a screening tool, which is, which would be what we call as physicians, we would call an off-label, meaning it's not the approved use in the investigative use authorization, emergency use authorization, EUA. But it is, it appears to be permissible as off-label, but that hasn't been clarified enough to know what's going to happen.
So, I have just a quick question.
Just 10 seconds, Commissioner. And then, the only other thing is, we just know.
Seconds?
Supply chain will look like even a few weeks from now. Yes, sir.
Now, two questions, I guess. So, the first question is, are you saying that because of this new increase of testing capacity, we'll be able to get a number of the people that are between not feeling sick and kind of having some symptoms that aren't now going into the 1,700 a week testing group that we already have?
Yes, yes. If you have a person that's coming to a shelter, if you're back in school and a child just has the sniffles, rather than waiting to see if they develop the sort of whole influenza-like illness, we can go ahead and test them at that point. And then, if they continue to be symptomatic, there's a negative test initially, we might test them two or three days better, because there is a latency where the PCR and antigens, it may take a little bit of time to develop that. But yes, anybody with any symptoms, so people with loss of smell, people that have a severe headache, people that have very stuffy nose, people have rhinitis, so without having the sort of triad or quadrat of things that are characteristic enough to define COVID as very likely, we can test anyone that has any of those symptoms. And that's actually, that's within the bounds of the EUA. What isn't within the bounds of EUA is testing people that are either worried or people that have been exposed. But the door this opens for that, is you have people that are exposed, you know the incubation period, as we've heard, we've probably heard 100 times each, based on the presence of recent illness, and talking about that, and talking about the outbreak workup that surrounds that, that it takes somewhere around five or six days where you have enough virus to be detectable, and you may be slightly symptomatic before that, or you may be asymptomatic a little bit past that.
So, one question I have is that you're targeting certain populations, and you're using Mosaic and the community health centers to do that, but a lot of the spreading from what we heard from Nahad, or we've heard multiple times, is really kind of in more mainstream or really active groups, you know, 20 to 29 that are out socializing and they think they're invincible or whatever.
Sure.
So, isn't that going to kind of, we're missing that whole component, aren't we?
I agree, I agree wholeheartedly. The national, it's not something that's been endorsed or articulated explicitly by the COVID, National COVID Task Force, as chaired by Vice President Pence, but there's a very strong emerging strategy of very broad testing. And that would, so for example, right now, to fly to many countries, you have to have a test within X amount of time, there are certain states that require that, too, if you're coming from a high-risk state. The NFL is testing and some other sports leagues testing basically everybody every day. And we really are hoping, so this is just the next step in going toward, we're hoping within the next few months to have a paper test. Incidentally, Binax, the unit cost is $5 for that. We're hoping to have paper tests, they're basically disposable, something like a pregnancy test, a just calorometric rapid test available at a dollar per test within the next few months. As soon as we get there, you might, for example, the bouncer at a bar, the greeter at a bar, might, people that don't have their app, there's also, there's an app that accompanies the Binax Now, that Oregon's not going to use initially because it's a little confusing, the applications of it. But what's going on in, you know, Korea, in Taiwan, in a number of the Western European countries, you have to show your app and show that you've been tested in the last 24 or 48 hours to go into many, many places. So, the library, the bar, the restaurant, sports events, et cetera, if we have sports events, maybe to go in to just to do your workout that day. So, it needs to be that point, and the thing is that the technology is available where we can produce these in very large quantities, because your basic chemical detection technology is very developed now. So, there is possible, so there's already production taking place that's going in peril by licensing for these very rapid, very cheap tests. The other thing about this test, so Binax Now, you have the ambiguity about whether or not it can be used to test asymptomatic people, but the other thing is it requires somebody with medical training at a minimum, a medical assistant or an EMT, to take the swab and then to plate that on a card. The idea of the paper test is you'll just, you'll just touch it to your tongue, so it's just a basic saliva test. There's also a company, it was a startup at MIT, that's organizing testing centers around the country where, if you want to do bulk testing, say, on each student in each class each day, and send it off, by the next day, you'd get it back. If there's a class that appears to have an infection, then you do, then you do more elaborate testing per student. So, there's a lot of different strategies, and this, to roll out this technology and to get it moving at scale has taken, has taken much longer in the United States than a number of other countries. So, but I think because we now have this expectation that there will be a vaccine, but it's not going to be fast, that we don't know when, the first ones will be licensed, the ones that are licensed earliest may only be able to be distributed by hospitals to maintain a very high very high refrigeration level that's minus 70 to minus 100 Fahrenheit. And hospitals have that already because they have liquid nitrogen. But there won't be the kind of broad distribution system available for that one. And then after that, we hope to get to whenever we can have everybody vaccinated, hopefully by sometime next spring, very latest in the summer, and get there by doing very, very frequent and non-invasive, easy, cheap testing so that we can do our very best to contain infections.
Dr. Conway, thank you so much. We are over our time allocation this morning, so I do appreciate this. And I just wonder how the workers at Costco and Safeway, who have seen hundreds of thousands of people the last seven months, you know, what happens there? So I haven't, you know, it sounds like they've actually been able to survive not having outbreaks of COVID. So I'm glad we're going to do more testing, but I do believe that we've had people in the public eye for months that have been working, and somehow, I believe they've actually been able to survive COVID-free. From, I don't-
Actually, Costco Corporation was one of the first of the big box stores to adapt a very proactive policy-
I know. You could only go in with a mask on.
Very aggressive sanitation, and mercifully many other stores have adopted that since.
Well, it is interesting, yes. But thank you so much for your presentation today. We do need to get on to our CARES Act funding update. I believe Greg Mun probably will be joining us now. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Possett. Thank you, Nahad.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Tiki.
Good morning. All right. I know we're running behind a little bit, so I'll try to do my best to catch us up here. For the record, Greg Mun, Chief Financial Officer for the county. And Commissioners, I gave you a small CARES Act allocation update packet yesterday, and hopefully have that in front of you. If not, I should be sharing it on the screen, the agenda for this morning.
We have it with us here today. Yeah, we have it.
Terrific. So just a few things, and this is what I'll be updating with you weekly, so we keep up to speed on what's going on here, is we have some time constraints and make sure we maximize the use of our funding that's been allocated to us. So the first thing this morning, I'm going to give you a brief update on the allocation worksheet. That's the spreadsheet that's on the two or three pages behind the agenda. There's a question that came up about a funding decision that was made last week for the Bend Next Resiliency Grant. We'll go over that briefly. Then we have new requests from Neighbor Impact and from the Rural Chambers of Commerce in the county. We have Scott Cooper, he will be on the line to answer questions about that. There's also a letter from him explaining these requests, both the addition, the warehouse expansion for 200,000, and then a proposed reallocation of a previously allocated winter shelter allocation of 100,000 to the isolation shelter allocation. So there's that. And then I believe Judy Trago and Dawith and Kent Elliott from our Rural Chambers are there in the room to answer questions about their proposed use of CARES funds. So I am going to roll right into the allocation worksheet, which is on your second page. And so that I can share with you, I need to rotate-
Let's rotate, please. Or we could turn our heads. There we go.
Okay. Okay, so what I'm going to highlight is just what's changed from what you saw last week. And I'll point out a couple of items, maybe that you might want to just keep yourself updated. But if you scroll down to the allocations here, is this large enough?
We have our sheet, we're fine.
Give your sheet, okay. So a couple of changes from last week. This first A1 here, which is this negative adjustment of 62,000. So originally, the board approved 62,000 to use for COVID tracers, for lease space for COVID tracers. And after a conversation with health, we decided that those costs were already funded in our current budget sources and could possibly be used elsewhere, reallocated elsewhere. So that's been readjusted, so now there's nothing being requested for that one item. Additionally, over here in the status-
I have a question, Greg. So, I mean, this was true when we did this. I mean, we already had this funded. So are you saying why allocate it here when we could allocate it somewhere else? Because we've known that since the day this was set up, that we had funding for this.
I'd actually not asked for it to be taken out, so I'm glad to see it's back in.
No, he's taking it out, though.
Well, yeah, now we have $62,000 that we can spend on, I think, more appropriate things.
But this was a, so I think we're going from the theory that this was an easy, legitimate expense that they could track to if we were audited to a, gosh, we got the money, let's do it something other than what we're doing already. Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying. And, you know, initially, back before we brought this to you at the beginning of September, we gathered as many stakeholders we could, and we did a real long brainstorming session on, you know, what, how possibly could we best allocate these funds in the community? And this was one of them that came up. There were others that you reviewed, that you decided not to use. This happens to be one that, after further looking into it and asking the question, okay, are we ready to move these funds over, that we really felt that it could be used better elsewhere. So part of this is proposing to just remove that item. The lease space for the COVID tracers has already been funded through several different funding sources. It's already in our budget. We believe it's a legitimate use of the funds, but we also already have existing-
I'm fine with it, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, okay.
I get it.
The other thing I just want to update to is, you'll notice over in the status column here, staff is updating me weekly, giving me updates on the status of these different items, and they're all different. So the goal here is to keep you updated on where we're at with these. Again, we do have a short timeframe. These dollars need to be deployed by the end of December. And the objective here is to give you updates on where we're at with that and also specific outcomes. And at times when some of these funding amounts that have been approved may or may not be needed, or they may actually need more funds. So I'm going to roll down here. Again, I'm not going to review all of these updates here, but they're all here for you to review. We can certainly come back with more information if you'd like. The only other change, or the only change was that 62,000. So last week, at the end of the session, we had this $184,000 number as dollars available. When we added the 62,000 back, we now have about 250,000 available. Any questions on that? That was item number one on the agenda.
We have the Deschutes County Rural Chamber of Commerce members here, the leadership of all three. I'd like to hear from them.
Yeah, Commissioner, this was just item number one on the agenda, back from here at the top. If you have any questions on this allocation, the updated allocation.
The only thing I would like to say was the fact that we granted 250,000 to Bend Next, which will only go to the City of Bend grants. I realize they have grants totaling 4.5 million, and they only have 1 million to give out. But I feel really responsible for the rest of our county and the fact that 25% of the other businesses are outside that. So in order to make that fair for the rest of our county, that means that we need to come up with $83,333 to give them their 25%. So I know it's not on here, but it's just something I'm aware of. And so I'm really glad that our chamber's here today because they're asking for 120,000, and that means that it is going to get out to the rest of the county. I was just kind of, you know, I was feeling guilty about that.
Well, but-
Of course I was.
To me, this was because they had an actual program set up to distribute money to businesses that is why we gave it. I'm still waiting to hear about this Big Business Oregon plan that COIC was involved with that is county, or actually, it's tri-county-wide.
It's tri-county.
But I still haven't heard any confirmation about those monies. And I also agree with what you're saying, is if we could find a way to get out monies like this for businesses in the outer communities, I'm very much in favor of that as a possible reason to hold back some of this for, until we, but there's no way to distribute it is the big problem, and so-
I have been talking to Business Oregon. They did allocate $625,000 to CYC, to Scott. Scott has talked, Annette talked to him yesterday. We need to get that money out as quickly as possible because I talked to the head of the state, Chris Cummings, and he said, if we get that money out really fast, we'll get another 800,000. Of course-
Well, see, again, I've heard nothing. I mean, that's good you've talked to Scott, but I have not seen any outreach by them. I know that they were concerned about their capacity to distribute money this way.
They have somebody, I think, on staff now that's going to be helpful with that. But Annette was talking to Scott yesterday morning to get-
Remember, we offered, we put one of our people in that program the last round because they didn't have enough staff, and he'd expressed that to us. So maybe we should be, we could do something along those lines again, because it's, this really, we do have a sense of where things need to go, and he's not part of this conversation that we need to make up for some, we will put some stuff specifically to Bend Next because they're organized. So maybe more of it needs to go to the outer, the other three cities and the non-incorporated. So I don't know, I just want to say we should merge that discussion somehow, if you want to take the lead.
Yeah, definitely. I was, after I talked to Annette, she said she was talking to Scott, because I talked to Chris Cummings, the head of the state, and I said, you know what, Portland got, you know, the 51% of the cultural arts. I'm like, I am so done with Multnomah County getting, sucking all this money that really was supposed to come over here. So talking to Chris, he said, well, I can actually get you up to 800,000 if you get the 625,000 fast. So that was, it was like 200,000, 175,000 more than originally Scott had told me. And I know, we've got to make sure that Scott can get the job done. I mean, I know our community needs it. Just saw, you know, another business-
Is this coming up at the COIC board meetings? I mean, because it's a big deal.
We had our board meeting last week.
Did it come up?
Yes, we, they did talk about money. It wasn't on the actual agenda at that time, but I had the COAC meeting with Scott, too. So I'm definitely talking to Scott all the time about this. So I am trying to get-
Good.
Pushing it as best I possibly can.
Yeah, keep us, that's good.
Anyway, I just think we're really, this side of the mountain has gotten so short-changed. When you saw that Multnomah County school districts even got more funding that went to the whole state, that was not, they already got their 500 million. It's just really unfair. And I clearly have one, I've been pointing this out to the governor's office, that we definitely should be getting more funding over here. Deschutes County has such a tourism climate, and we have, you know, we have a very high unemployment. So, and our businesses, you know, you can't survive with 25%. The winter's coming on, restaurants are going to have such a hard time if we don't get different numbers so they can actually enlarge the number of people inside in their restaurants. So we have our chamber here. Do you guys want to step up and talk about it?
We're getting there, we're getting there.
Thank you. Oh, yes, sorry, Greg has his agenda.
Yeah, hang on, just real quick. So on the number two item to confirm the resiliency grant amount, what do you want to do with that? I have a call into Scott Akok as well. I was hoping to have an update to hear from him. He was, I wanted to ask him the same questions that you were just discussing. I can bring that back next, we can bring this back next week? Or what, how do you want to deal with this?
We've already told him that's what we're going to do. I mean, what are you going to do, take it back?
Right.
I mean, yeah, I think we do it, and then we maybe, you know, advocate for making sure more of the Business Oregon money, you know, we change the formula for how that gets spent to kind of equalize everything. But I don't think we go back to them and say anything, I mean, it just doesn't make sense to me.
We aren't in a position to go back. So-
That's my view. I don't know, Commissioner, but-
So what's the request? So we're talking about the $250,000 we made a decision about last week, approved at that date to go to the Bend Chamber of Commerce, which is a grant program that they had in place. What's the other request?
Well, I'm just saying, okay, that's 75% Bend. We're dealing with the whole county.
Yeah, but no, but I mean, it sounds like there's another request from somebody else for these same dollars?
No, the whole county needs, we need to come up with another $83,000 just to make it fair for the whole county. Bend is worried about Bend, and we need to be worried about Redmond Sisters, La Cien, Tamalow, you know, the whole-
Well, I don't think $83,000 makes-
But what was Greg responding to? The fact that there's a percentage for the rural or something? Greg, was there another request for these dollars, or were you responding to our conversation?
No, there's, we're talking about the same thing, but maybe I can clarify a little bit. There was a question on the amount that was allocated last week to Bend, to Bend Next, and that, whether or not that was including businesses in the rural portion of the county. And it does not. And so the question was, as Commissioner Dare was just bringing up, is should those dollars be split 75, 85, or 25, 75 to the chamber, and then 25 through some other mechanism?
Yeah, okay.
The rural portion of the county, which is where the conversation came up about possibly that could go through COIC. And then we started the conversation about the status of the previous grant program they're working on.
Okay, I'm with you. So, no, I mean, I support keeping that amount clear. I support keeping that amount at 250,000. The grant process, as I say, it was kind of a pool of grant applications already in place. 250,000 is added to a million from the city, and it's not enough for that program. So, I mean, I don't support changing that number, but just making sure-
It's short, it's really short.
Yeah, but yeah, coming up with other-
What I am in support of is your philosophy. And what I'm also in support of is of this 246,000 we have left of CARES, maybe setting aside 100,000 of it and not spending it yet in case the Business Oregon thing doesn't work out, or we can't reallocate. Because I do, but the missing part in the other cities at this point, and non-incorporated, is who distributes the money? It's really quite a process. So if a mechanism develops that, we would have a set aside possibly. So that's one of my thoughts, is maybe we do keep some money set aside until we work out this Business Oregon thing.
David Given's worked with Scott last time?
Yeah.
Okay, so David-
But he didn't, he wasn't the person that actually was offered to help. It was somebody from Greg's department.
Greg, who did you have helping?
Yeah, we had one of our folks that helps us out with tax, who we were able to actually bring in a little bit sooner. Her name is Emily, and she did a great job up there. My understanding is that her work up there is now over, but I don't know anything more than that. I'm going to ask Scott about that when I actually talk to him.
Well, I think that's true because that was the second batch of loans from the first batch of money. So now we're talking about a next program of Business Oregon or money, so.
Yeah.
Well, I know it was confirmed at 625,000, and Scott told me that it was the second payment, if we got that spent, was going to be another 625. When I called Chris Cummings and had a very detailed conversation with him, he raised the second one up to 800,000. So it wasn't what I was asking for, but at least it was, you know, it was a bit more.
Oh, I understood what you said, that there was going to be a 625 and an 800.
Yeah, an 800. As soon as we get the 625,000 out the door, they will give us more money.
The first 625?
Mm-hmm.
I thought that was already done, yeah.
No, this is, this is brand-new money. The 625,000 is brand-new, that just was awarded, I believe, on Thursday, last Thursday.
Okay, that's what I was trying to ask.
Yeah, that's, that is brand-new money, but then there's another 800,000 which will follow that.
Okay, great.
So that's what we're pushing on, to get that out, you know, out the door. So I can't wait till you talk to Scott, and I'm sure he needs to talk to me, too. So thank you, Greg, for-
And possibly, if it's helpful, we can bring Scott on next week for an update.
Yes, that would be, I'm sure he'll love it.
It's funny, he's calling me right now on the telephone, which I won't answer.
Good.
I will get- I will get back to him. Okay, so on to new requests, we have two from Neighbor Impact. One is a food warehouse and sharing or somebody could let Scott Cooper in to the Zoom, that'd be great. And then also a request for reallocation of previously approved funds. A little wait here for Scott to show up. And the proposal's also in your packet.
Here I am. Yes.
Hello.
Good morning.
There we go.
Scott.
And I hope someone decided it was a good idea to chainsaw trees on my property today, so apologize for any background noise.
We prefer to barking dogs, actually.
Had I known that, we would have been doing that.
Yeah, there you go.
In brief, you have the proposal in front of you. The warehouse is going to need to be expanded. We had hoped that the surge in demand for food would be short-term in nature, but we are continuing to feed 25% more people than we were feeding pre-pandemic. So we are going to have to figure out some way to be able to stage food, repack food, store food, all of that. We've got a project underway for, its total package cost is 397,000 to expand that warehouse and make improvements to allow extra trucks to come in and be able to do all the work that involves with that. Greg mentioned when we were talking about this the other day that there was extra money left in the cares fund and we should possibly approach the commissioners about that for all or a portion of the portable tent structure that we are looking at putting into place. I do want to emphasize that I myself am a former Chamber of Commerce director, so I understand the challenges of being a chamber director and totally support any efforts that you want to make to support your rural chambers. But if you've got some extra, you know, or part of the money, it would definitely make a difference. We have not expanded that warehouse since 1992. We were already working on a fundraising plan to do a physical sticks and bricks expansion and then COVID hit. So I'm kind of a little behind the eight ball in this. Winter is coming and I got to have somewhere to put all this food. But that's basically it. Do you want me to talk about the fund swap, Greg? Now or hold on?
Well, I have a question before that, Scott. So I was reading your letter that you were, before the pandemic, you were feeding 24,000 households monthly. Now you say you're.
People.
Eating 32, well, it says households here.
Probably a typo in my.
Okay, so that was people and then it goes to 32,000 people, okay? Is your, I don't know as much as maybe I should on this, but so I helped serve food at a, or deliver packages at a church in Sisters a while back and I know other, in other places that goes on. Does all of that food come from you or is that separate food? Because there was 100 plus people there that day, it seemed like, and so I just wondered if, kind of trying to get a size of how much food, how many people.
We have 58 separate partners that the food goes out to. It's a combination that goes to most of them. The first thing we tell any local grocery store is look to donate any excess product to your local food bank. There's no reason for us to drive it to Redmond only to drive it back around back again. All the commodity distribution that Feeding America organizes with USDA ends up coming to our warehouse here in Redmond and then we redistribute that out to the 58 partners and then we get allocations from Oregon Food Bank that comes in here.
So you're more of a wholesaler?
Probably, you're going to see both.
Your, your facility, your warehouse is more of a wholesale in the market sense. If there was a market, it would be a wholesaler that then is getting it out to the 55 partners.
Right.
Okay.
And what we experience is when the big semis come in and we unload a huge amount of food, that food is usually gone within 24 to 48 hours. So on two days, three days a week, we need an enormous amount of space to set it all down. It also comes in in 2,500 pound packets coming from USDA and all has to be broken down into something that's consumer size before it goes back out again. So we need a lot of floor space. We don't have long-term storage space, but the floor space is a big issue. It was a big issue before. Social distancing has made it an even bigger issue because now we have to spread out the volunteers who repack all the food.
Thank you. Thanks for explaining that.
So are you working on the existing parcels or existing property there in Redmond and is there enough kind of elbow room for some of this?
We have shoved that, Tony, you're familiar with the property.
Yep.
On it a lot of times. So if you go behind the warehouse where the community garden used to be.
Yep.
Put a big new asphalt pad out there. I love High Desert Paving, by the way. They don't, they donated most of the cost of that.
Special thanks to them.
Yep, and so that's where the new proper new expansion is going to go.
And then this hard-sided tent, is that expected to be a capital item that'll be there many years? What kind of life expectancy is on it?
Yeah, it's, it's not really, I mean, they call it a tent, but it's like big hard plastic sides.
Yeah, okay.
If you were out at the Facebook Center in Prineville, you would see a similar thing if you've ever driven out and looked at that facility, a big dome-shaped thing.
So permanent, basically?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's fast and it's easy to put up and we were able to find multiple bids on that, so.
Okay.
I don't know for the time for numbers, but I'd be in support of, of some of this 248 going to that. I kind of want to hear the proposal also from the.
The rural chambers?
Rural chambers, so.
Thank you for joining us.
Yes, they thought enough to join us.
Should we take a lunch break now?
Oh, gosh. No, we're not. Anderson, Commissioner DeBonne and Chair Dare for allowing us to come today and you have the letter in front of you, so I won't read it verbatim. But for three or four years now, the rural chambers have been working closely together. We actually meet quarterly on, at each other's locations just to talk about how we can help small businesses in our communities and we really work together as advisors and we work on projects together. And so the small rural chambers have unique needs and issues that the larger chambers may not have. So the Sisters, Sun River and Lapines Chamber mission is to assist small businesses in our rural communities. We are in a unique position to help our local businesses in the rural part of Deschutes County with resources, education and available grant and loan funding currently available through federal, state and local funding sources and we have been doing that. We've set up committees, we've set up the structure for distribution of those funds and in Sisters, we've distributed 37 grants to 37 small businesses in our community. The value of the chambers is our ability to be the first-line service providers for information, saving time and resources at the county and statewide levels. We've been working since March again to assist our members and our communities get through the COVID-19 crisis together. Unfortunately, most of the funding sources for COVID-19 are for businesses and 501(c)(3) organizations. Sisters, Sun River and Lapine Chambers are all 501(c)(6) organizations and not eligible for these funding streams. We have all experienced a loss of revenue due to membership non-renewals, decreases in TRT, which is the transient room tax, loss of revenue from our events and our promotional materials. We have been working diligently to help our businesses and we are grateful to be able to assist. Due to the economic turmoil caused by the pandemic, these funds will be used to publicize the resumption of our activities in a safe manner and the funds are not accounted for in state and local governments and will be expended by December 2020. To be able to continue to be as effective as possible and to allow us to continue to be efficient and agile in publicizing and the resumption of our activities, we are requesting a $120,000 grant to be divided equally between our three rural Deschutes County Chambers of Commerce and we appreciate your consideration of this request during this difficult time. I have personally hand sanitized these reports for you. It is our 2019 information on what we've done for Sisters, so you can see what our activities are. So we all have different needs and issues at our rural chambers of commerce, but an example of our challenges are, which we just found out two weeks ago, that we were canceling our Sisters Harvest Fair, which brings 10,000 people to town. So the resumption of our activities is to, we have to start marketing to have families and small groups of people come to town. So we are not able to have 10,000 people to come to town at one time. We're just not able to do that. But the funds that we, the revenue that is produced from these events is money that we use to market town and bring people to town. And that funding is obviously not going to be available and that's about a $35,000 revenue generator for the local chamber. And so that's just one example of how this funding will be used for the resumption of activities in Sisters country to bring small groups of people to town to shop in our businesses and we are following all the safety guidelines. We are using masks, we are having social distancing and we have signage that indicates please wash your hands, please wear your mask, please social distance. And so that is what the funding will be used for, is in our case for tourism and how to safely reengage the community, whether it's shop local, whether it is bringing people from Bend and Redmond and Prineville to Sisters for the day and promoting how to do that safely and vice versa. How do we bring people to visit for the day to Prineville or Sun River? We are legally allowed to be open by the state guidelines and so we need to promote.
Lapine.
Yes.
You said Prineville.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
It's okay, I knew what you meant.
Sun River and Lapine, not, we love Prineville too. How to bring back those visitors safely. And so we appreciate your consideration of the request and I don't know if my colleagues would like to add anything, but.
I was going to ask if they, if they wanted to say.
Yes, and I would like, can I approach to hand these out? This is our 2019.
Yes.
Activities. I have not done the 2020 yet, obviously.
It's going to be different.
It's going to be way different, but I'll hand these out so you can see what our activities were in 2019.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you again for consideration of the request.
Thank you, Judy, for coming in. Anne, do you want to let us know about Lapine?
Well, sure, always.
Always.
I would, I would, of course, mirror much of what Judy said about what the intentions for, for using the money to really accentuate the need for the safety, the, all of the things that we've certainly learned over the last few months that we need to do and stress that to folks. But we've, we've lost revenue, maybe on some different levels. Some of our major fundraisers for our chamber, for instance, our annual banquet, which is a pretty good fundraiser for our chamber budget, we weren't able to have. And on the tourism side, our, our visitor guide, we did not do our visitor guide this year and that's actually close to a $30,000 hit to our budget on the visitor side. So and it's, it's a trickle-down effect, of course. It's not just us. We have a gentleman who does our ad sales for our visitor guide and it's so the fairly substantial, at least for him, amount that, that we would pay him to do that. He's not received, so he's not spending money and it just, it just all trickles down within the community. And I personally would use some of this money to really augment the shopping local. We've done a, our community's done a really good job of, of changing their ways and maybe not coming north so much as they, as they used to and staying in Lapine. And I think we just need to continue that and maybe stress, express the, the need as winter comes on and that sort of thing.
Anne, thank you so much. I actually had the most outstanding lunch yesterday at the WikiUp station.
Uh-huh.
With my dear friend Teresa Harshman from Hepner. Anyway, she.
There it is again.
I know, Hepner, we love Hepner. Anyway, we had the best lunch ever and it was, you know, I was so, it was really great to just see the community and what's happening. I also went to our South County Mental Health Office and talked to them and, you know, we really love the relationship. So I'm, I'm sorry to hear that, yeah, we have the trickle-down effect and what you can, what this money could do to help would be very important.
Well, in support of the businesses, our businesses have done a tremendous job of changing how they do business so that they can stay in business. I too am, I'm extremely worried about winter coming. It's already, you know, 20, in the 20s for us in the morning and these restaurants that have gone to great lengths to create some outside seating, that's not going to be possible, you know, as we, as we move forward, even, even with the heaters and all the things that, that they've managed to come up with, which has been an expenditure on their part too. But we know that in another month that it just won't be possible to eat outside in Lapine. Yeah, it's just not going to happen. What can we do to help those businesses make it through the winter? It's all, you know, winter in Lapine is already a hardship on, on a lot of businesses. So anything we can do to, to make that a little easier during this pandemic is certainly top of mind for us.
Great. Oh, thank you so much for joining us.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your consideration of this. We really appreciate that.
Anne, did you want to add anything?
I'd like to pop in if I could.
Okay, you may pop in.
Yeah, I know we're going to.
Oh, use this one over here because we like to keep everything sanitized.
But I'm just.
No, over here. That's Judy touched that way.
I wiped it off.
Oh, she wiped it off.
Wiping.
Okay, good. Thank you, Judy.
I'd like to.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to quickly throw in a couple with this, of course, but I'm seeing two rays of optimism that I'd like to leave us with. We need some optimistic views. Number one, vacation home rental in Sun River was up this summer. Very surprising. And what we saw is this, that Sun River has become the choice of vacations right now as opposed to a Disneyland, for example. People can come up, they can rent a house, they got the wide open spaces and I think we're kind of proving that we can exist with this and virus and be cautious and be safe. The second observation that I'm seeing, real estate in South Deschutes County is off the charts. People are leaving the metropolitan areas to be able to work at home and come out to these areas. And it's good optimism there. I'm real excited to see that. We need to be there to continue that upswing.
Great, we love you.
Good.
Absolutely.
That's.
Thank you.
Really wonderful. No, thank you so much.
I want to say a couple words too. I, I really appreciate all three of you coming in today.
It's good to see.
It's really good to, it's really good to see you all. I like it when we come out to see you too and your offices. I was in Lapine last week and, and it's, there's always a bundle of energy at the Lapine Chamber and they were inviting me. I couldn't go last Saturday to go advance, but they always have stuff going on and I just think that, and what you're all doing is so important and so I'm, I'm supportive of the request, but, but I just, I, it's great you can come in and it's great you're here. A lot of our stuff is on Zoom and it's really nice. And it looks like you've got your Halloween colors kind of going here. I know, I don't know if it's color coordinated, thank you. Thanks so much for coming.
Yes, good. Wonderful. Well, so we have requests, we have Greg and, yes, so, and you're telling us we have 246,000 that we have not allocated.
That's right.
Today.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, which is good. Actually, I'm hap, I'm really happy that the 62,000 was added back into available funds. So that does help. Tom, did you have any comments that you wanted to make?
No commissioners.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, I didn't want to not have you say anything today if you did. Greg, is there anything about that 100,000 swap? Is that, is that going to affect anything?
I'd suggest that, no, I'd suggest that Scott give you a brief on that and then perhaps you can let me know how, you know, you can vote on how you want to allocate these funds.
Okay.
Well, even without a brief, if we've read it, I already know what I'm going to do. I'm going to agree to the swap. Are you?
I am too, yeah.
Matter of time, I don't really.
Swap is.
He explained it in his letter pretty well.
Right.
Don't you think?
Yeah.
Are you guys all right with that? So.
So then in.
So then, if I can say a few words in the middle of this, the 246 uncommitted, you know, I could see funding the chamber and coming up with X amount for neighbor impact at this point, you know, maybe not the 200, but a good amount there. Also, I have a hunch that there's other items in there and I'm thinking, just the one that jumps out is we put $500,000 for Emergency Operations Center. I have a hunch that some of those will be able to, will naturally scale back. We don't even have to ask for it, you know, as, as it's coming in. So there may be some other revenue in there that, that's going to just naturally not get spent. Maybe not a lot, and I may be wrong, but my point is it's good to make some commitments up early and get the dollars flowing and then, you know, manage it weekly like we're doing, you know, every Wednesday, making, keeping an eye on this. I see our accountant is running through the numbers.
Yes, of course I am. If we, if we allocated 120,000, taking off from the 246,000, that leaves us 126,843 for the neighbor impact building, the hard plastic building that they haven't remodeled since, what it was, in 1992? So, you know, it sounds like it's definitely a need. I don't know if that's, you know, if you can work on that bid and get them to come down a little bit more, but.
Well, and part of it, he said that it was replacing funding, or it allows it afloat essentially, so.
And I support that.
Yeah, I do too.
So can someone make a motion then?
I'll make a motion that the remainder of our, our current remainder of our CARES funding of 246,843 dollars be split, 120,000 to the Deschutes County Rural Chambers of Commerce as they've requested, and the remaining 126,843 dollars be contributed to Neighbor Impact for their request regarding their regional food warehouse.
Is there a second?
And I will second it.
Any further discussion?
So a note for the chambers, this is a very important time, you know, congratulations, 501(c)(6). How did, we didn't know it'd be awkward to get funded when there's money going out for businesses. But a business support organization, business service organization, a business membership organization, it's really important. Now is the time for the relationship building, you know, do, do what you do and do it the best you can, I'm asking, and be positive. And very specifically, if you could really take time to do a survey of the businesses and share the information back, because I know that there's, there's, you know, email newsletters from each organization and, you know, the content comes and goes from different. But if you could, please, like, do a little outreach, call some of the businesses that you know of, say, how are you doing? How are you getting through this? Any thoughts, anything you want the world to know? So, you know, really take some time, please, and really get the word out and welcome people in, because it is going to be, yeah, we don't know exactly what's coming with the winter, you know, with COVID on top of transitioning economy, plus new people, just like Kent said, there's new people in town and we're seeing them come out of the larger metro areas. Maybe they've, you know, traveled here before, so they know the area, but now people are moving in. So, yeah, I'm excited. Thank you.
Commissioners, do you want to include the reallocation of winter shelter funding to the COVID isolation funding, the 100,000?
We can make that a second.
Yes. We did want to.
Well, I'll do a second motion for that.
Okay, let's vote on this motion, the initial motion. Commissioner Henderson?
About yes.
Commissioner DeBoeck?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we need a second motion then on the transfer?
So at this time, I'll move approval of a winter shelter allocation as defined in the memo from Neighbor Impact, so it's swapping funds.
Okay, is there a second?
Second then.
Further discussion? Commissioner DeBoeck?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, so this means Greg, don't, don't take any more money away or we'll be, we need to now find possibly more money to go for the rest of the county.
Hey.
After we talk to Scott.
Yeah, we'll keep an eye on that.
Yes, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
We will update all of this and I will see you next week on it.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you for joining us this morning. And Whitney being that it is 12:15.
Did she see that coming?
I think that, can we move you to 1 o'clock? Would you mind? Is that fine? Okay, all right. We will adjourn at this moment and reconvene at 1 PM then. So thank you.
A meeting with PAC West about a week ago and asked at the conclusion of the briefing that they provided you that staff come back and kind of begin discussions about what some of the county's legislative priorities might look like. So to prepare for today's discussion, Laura and I have been working with departments to compile a list of legislative concepts and ideas that they are tracking and have interest in. And as you can see on Zoom, we've invited a number of them to join us today. And if the, if it sounds like a good idea to the board, we're just prepared to walk through department by department and kind of talk about some of the items that they've laid out here so that you can have discussions with staff about some of these concepts and then perhaps conclude today's item with a broader discussion about items that may not be on this list or commissioner priorities that maybe weren't covered by staff in their presentations. So I'm certainly open to changing course, but that was our original intent for today's item.
Excellent.
Does that sound like a good idea?
It does, it sounds like a really good idea.
Perfect. Well, I see we have a number of folks, Holly Harris being one, and so Holly, not to put you on the, on the spot, but we might start with behavioral health, I think. And I am not sure if Holly was planning to present in place of Janice, so Holly, feel free to let me know if that's not the case. Are you filling in for Janice today?
No, I believe Barrett flashes, but I'm here as support if something comes up crisis relating.
Got it. Well, then I will turn things over to Barrett to talk about the items that Behavioral Health has submitted.
Yeah, thank you and thanks commissioners. So there are five policy option packages that you can see. The first one would be the Community Behavioral Health Services is our number one priority. With that, what we are hoping is to continue the CCBHC continuation of funds. That's what that funding supports. Particularly, it is focusing on continuing our PPS payment, which is our prospective payment system so that we can continue that funding. It also creates a fund for student incentives and to build a behavioral health workforce, and it expands housing opportunities particularly for young adults in transition. So 14 to 25-year-old population. That's our number one priority. The other one behind it is really the aid and assist. Am I still there?
There, yeah. Commissioner DeBoeck here, question. So these are all policy option packages from the Oregon Health Authority that we're taking positions on as a big, a starting point, correct?
Correct.
Just wanted to make sure. So, yeah, I mean, these are, because we'll hear about them at the Association of Oregon Counties also, you know, it'll pop up through the Health and Human Services Committee and at the board level and the position of AOC will be taken on some of these also.
Yeah, and this is exact, you're exactly right, Commissioner DeBoeck. This is what the ASCMHP has supported and that we are supporting as well, particularly the community-based certified health clinics. We want to continue that work. We were one of the nine counties who used some of our general fund to continue to support that work. And to support that particular POP allows us to get funding and continue the funding through the prospective payment system to continue that work. So that is POP number one. The second one is the aid and assist, which really talks about having more secure residential treatment facilities in the state of Oregon. We also support that. There's some funding that would come our way. Now, unfortunately, the three facilities that they're discussing in that proposal are in the Portland area. Molly, I don't know, I see you're on here, don't know if you want to say more about that, but that's funding that we want to support because we have a lack of secure residential treatment facilities. Molly, did you want to add anything?
No, I mean, I think ideally those facilities would be throughout the state, but in the timeframe that they want to get those facilities implemented in, they have that resource in the Portland metro area. But the good part about this pop is that it will bring money our way for work that we are already doing that we don't receive funding, that we don't receive very much funding at all for. So it will do that, and then it will also create a team at the state level, really starting to guide aid and assist processes, not only within counties, but jails, court systems, the hospital system, to help everybody coordinate together to hopefully streamline how we're providing those services and provide better services.
The, I had a question, there's wording in there about for a growing aid and assist population, and we've heard about this a little bit. How, how much is it growing?
Exponentially, it's, it's growing. It's, when we first took over our caseload, we had 18, I think, on there, and now we have about 50, so it's, it's growing at a fast rate. I think they expect it to grow another 25% in the next couple of years. So in the last three years, I think Holly probably can remember because she, she wrote it into her report recently, but I think it was like up 124% or something like that.
Thank you.
So there are five priorities. Those were the top two that we're supporting. The third one is children's mobile response and stabilization services. And really, it's about creating a crisis mobile response for children. We would also support that because it brings funding to the community and the county. However, it's a little bit further down on our priority list because we do provide that and we want to make sure that the commissioners and the public are aware that right now our crisis response does respond to that. This is specific to, unique to responding to children's crisis, although we already do that, there would still be some trickle funding to, to the county. So we are supportive of that. Holly, I don't know if you have any other comments you want to make about that?
No, other than to say that we would always want to support any funding specific to kids because they're often left off the table when it comes to these funding requests. And so we do have a very robust response to children with our mobile crisis team, so I'm not sure why in the, in the bill, they, they indicate that it's only for adults because that's not our reality here. But we, with the money, we could certainly do more to even enhance what we do for kids in this community.
So that was the third priority. Priority four is the Junction City Residential Treatment Facility, which again is another secure residential treatment facility. Oregon State, it increases the Oregon State Hospital treatment capacity. And I think if you remember a few years ago, that was up and running and then it shut down, and I think it's about reopening and re-expanding that. And we always, as, as Molly just pointed out, we always can use more resources for those kind of facilities.
So what.
And priority five was really around.
Barrett, excuse me. What number are we talking about? Because I know we are always like so short of beds at this level, at the top level. How many are they talking about here?
You know, I don't have the number exactly in front of me. I don't know, Molly, do you know how many they're talking about at the state hospital level?
If they're talking about just one SRTF, typically those are about 16 beds, which honestly would be very helpful, our capacity at the state hospital for civil commitment patients and for aid and assist. We're completely full with aid and assist. We have to get aid and assist individuals within seven days of the court order into the hospital. So what that has done is stopped all civil commitment admissions to the hospital, which is then backing up into our acute care system here at St. Charles, and then we have people languishing in our ED waiting for beds. So it's, it's quite the flow issue. So opening that facility would be very helpful to help move our aid and assist clients and our civil commit clients out of the state hospital in Salem so we can get people in from our local acute care and our jails.
So I have a question, Molly. You know, the three facilities that are in the Portland metro, why can't one of those facilities be here?
Well, part of the issue is finding, finding an actual facility. So I'm, I believe that in the Portland metro area, they have facilities that they can get up and running fairly quickly to get something up. I think the first one is supposed to be up in 2021. To have an SRTF of that size here, we would have to probably build it from ground. And the other issue is just with the, how much it costs to buy homes here for our residential treatment facilities that are looking at trying to open another facility here. At the cost of the home, they can't even recover their costs from what they get paid from the state. So.
I, I would add that population base has a lot to do with it as well.
Okay. I just was curious, thank you.
Sure, and then the last option package is priority number five, which is an incentive program for having people move to behavioral health, electronic records. We already are involved in that, we support that, but that's why it's our lowest priority is we're already, we're already invested in EHR with our Epic and Ocean EHR system. So we're well-connected. Those systems that we have now are connected with St. Charles, Mosaic Medical, so we can communicate and coordinate care with those facilities. So that's why it is our lowest priority right now. So those are the five options that we're looking at and why we're supporting them.
Thank you so much for joining us today.
Thank you.
Great hearing, and we have our AOC meeting next Monday, so we'll see what, I go to the, the health meeting, so we'll see what connect, cross connects. So who's going to do public health?
Yes, so Tom Coon is going to be giving us the public health update, and it looks like we also have Nahad and Dr. Conway on the phone, but we'll turn things over to Tom, who I think is going to lead us through the public health priorities.
Yes, hello commissioners. I'm here to share with you the public health priorities that CLO has identified, the Conference Local Health Officials Legislative Committee, which I sit on. And these are not necessarily in priority order, but just to try to bring you up to speed at what we are see, seeing coming out this session. Public health modernization, of course, you're familiar with this one. It's for the next biennial, the 21 through 22 biennial. We've already had four years, or we're going on the fourth year of this funding. It's proposed at $67 million for the policy package. And some of the funds, 12 million would go towards positions at Oregon Health Authority, and then the remainder would go to local public health authorities and the tribes. 12 million, as I said, for Oregon Health Authority, and then the remainder, which is about 40 million for local public health tribes and then community-based organizations. So it's being spread out in that manner. We've done some work, obviously, to our outreach to our long-term care facilities using this funding, as well as the regional epidemiology work that we're doing. And this is coming around the corner once again this year. And so we're happy to see that on board, especially in the COVID environment. There will obviously be a lot of work using this funding in that area. So if there are any questions on modernization?
I don't think so.
Okay, great. Another one, this is one that came up in the session earlier this year, and it's back again statewide tobacco retail licensure. It's estimated at $2 million, and this would establish a statewide licensing system, which would also work to stop retailers from selling tobacco products and inhalant delivery systems to minors. It gives Oregon Health Authority, Public Health Division, the tools and needs to educate retailers about the laws and also hold them accountable. It would create 12 positions and approximately 7.8 FTE at the state, and that would include inspectors, underage decoys, analytical staff, as well as admin staff. So that's once again coming around the corner during this session. Any questions on that one?
Yeah, Tom, this, Phil, I guess, you know, we've discussed this quite a bit over in my four, in the four years I've been here about doing it from a local basis, you know, where it's, you know, a city or a county does it or whatever. And, but this basically kind of moves tobacco into a more like alcohol or marijuana in terms of the seller has more responsibilities and has to pay a fee, I assume, to be licensed. Is that what the idea is?
Yes, there would be a fee associated with it. Yes, there would be a fee associated with it, they haven't outlined exactly what the fees would be, uh, they did say approximately in the, in the two-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred-dollar range.
Okay, I, yeah, I don't know, uh, and then would it also, it looked like it does have vaping as part of that, or?
Yes, they, uh, with, it, it, selling inhalant delivery systems, which would vaping would be part of that.
Because I think there are some places now that sell vaping things that don't sell tobacco, don't they, or?
Yeah, there are some stores that are vaping only, that are out there in our county and across the state.
Okay.
So, and, uh, just wanted to point out, although there was a federal ban on flavored products that are being vaped, uh, there, um, we found there are ways that you can get around what the ban includes to still use some of those flavored products, um, we're, we're hoping people are not doing so after all the, the news about the health impacts of doing flavored products, but, uh, that still is a potential out there.
Yeah, that's good.
So, uh, the next one I want to bring to your attention, there's a possible beer, wine, and cider tax that will be coming out, um, in the legislation, and, uh, one of the things to note is that Oregon's beer, wine, and cider taxes are some of the lowest in the country, and beer tax hasn't been increased since nineteen seventy-seven, and wine hasn't been increased since nineteen eighty-three, so it's been a while before these, since these taxes have occurred, and, um, this package would be used to raise funds, uh, in order to combat substance use through prevention and education, and also other related behavioral health services. The tax amount has not yet been determined, uh, that's still in the works, but they say that ten percent would go to the Oregon Health Authority, Public Health Division, for substance use prevention and education, and then the remainder to be distributed across behavioral health services in the state.
So only ten percent would go to the, to substance abuse type stuff?
Well, no, that's, that's just at the Oregon Health Authority for their, their staffing for that, and then the remainder would grow across to the local behavioral health authorities.
I did have someone advocate with regard to the wine industry here locally, there's a question on one of my debates, and, uh, I asked a friend that's in that business, and they brought this up as a, the wine industry's had a really tough year with the smoke in the Lemp Valley, and then, uh, starting a new industry here locally, and they were speaking against the tax, I haven't really thought about it much, I, that's interesting, it's hasn't been raised for some fifty years almost, forty-five years.
Yes, yes, I was, I was surprised by that information as well, and then the, uh, other two items of interest, uh, there's always the potential for the immunization bill to come back, it was House Bill thirty-sixty-three in the past, and, um, at this time, I don't know of anyone that's going to be carrying the torch for that, or if maybe it will come out in some different type of format due to COVID vaccines being available in the future, so, um, still not a lot of information out about what's going to happen with a, an immunization bill for non-medical exemptions, and, um, of course, other COVID immunization priorities that may occur during the session are still not exactly known at this time. And those pretty much summarize the public health, uh, priority bills that we've brought to you, brought to you today.
Thank you so much, Tom.
A question, Tom, and this goes for behavioral health, um, the MHP as well as CLO, so if Deschutes County takes a position of supporting or not supporting, does the organization, kind of the, the Conference of Local Health Officials, will still take a position, and it could be different than Deschutes County?
Yes, um, yes, they, they bring the information forward, which is great being on the committee, that really helps me be informed about the legislation, and then I, I feel my role is to bring it back to you to make the decision whether the county will support it or not, but there have been bills in the past that CLO supported that we opposed or vice versa, so that's how it works.
Is there a, and this isn't just you, as I say, this is the organization now, is there other membership fees that are going for, for these behavioral health and public health, um, groups? Do you, is there a membership fee for CLO?
Uh, yes, there is, there is for CLO, it, it's, it's not very large, and I, I don't recall off the top of my head what it is.
Because I know, yeah, through AOC, we've got just lots of different kind of sub-organizations and, uh, you know, different folks that do that, so, you know, I'm just, um, some of these things, uh, yeah, I would love to be grounded, when we talk about tobacco retail and beer and wine and cider, and the great things we could do with these dollars, I still just see kind of a disconnect, you know, it's a syntax so we can have people remind you that it's not good for you, I mean, I just, I have a hard time not breaking out of that cycle, so, um, yeah, I don't know that I would be real excited about supporting these things, uh, but then, as I say, I'm, I'm starting to see that, you know, we, we have our professional staff, professional organization membership, which has lobbying efforts also, so just observations and, uh, you know, I've definitely learned and come up to speed over the years during these lobbying efforts, so, thanks, thanks for what you do, it's just, yeah, I don't know that I'm excited about some of these syntax ideas again still.
Sure, you're welcome, and I just, just bringing it to your attention.
Yep, yep.
Yes, so we, we don't have anyone in the whole entire state then that would bring up, um, House Bill thirty-sixty-three, Tom?
Uh, not that we're aware of at this time.
I know, who's going to touch that one?
So is that, so what, I don't, is that a bill to constrain non-medical exemptions? To reduce the amount of them, is that what?
Right.
Politically correct way to say.
That you must, you should be getting your vaccinations unless you really have an incredible reason.
Commissioners, I think, uh, part of the hesitancy has been partially out of respect for, uh, recently deceased, um, Representative Greenluck, who was the original sponsor, and I, um, I don't know whether or not Representative Helt has decided if such a bill is proposed, or, um, perhaps if she would propose one herself, uh, how she would, if she would be involved, thanks.
Yes, okay, well, she didn't do it this year, she did it the prior year, so, uh, interesting. All right, thank you so much, um, are we now onto the clerk's office then?
Yes, and I think, um, with all of this going on in Nancy's world, I don't know that she was able to make our scheduled time, but she did submit five legislative concepts for your visibility to that touch on elections, and three that have to do with recording elements that her, would impact her operations, so, um, to the extent the board would like follow-up information from Nancy or for us to schedule a follow-up meeting, we're happy to do.
After November third?
Exactly, let's stand by about a month for her.
Or maybe November tenth.
I think she has a lot on her plate.
Yes.
Uh, these were mentioned at AOC, uh, I think I've heard about all of these already at the Association of Oregon Counties, and they were just mentioned just like this, just kind of laying out the concepts, and this is where I mentioned this morning, the Property Values Appeals Board instead of BOPDA, uh, so that was.
PBAB, I like all of them, uh, the number four is one that, that was one of the big issues, if you put a housing fee, then people won't get their death certificates, because they, they get to be a hundred dollars to get a death certificate, it's like, well, who needs that? So, or, or if they need it, they don't like it, so, good.
That's great, and then as you can see, Nick LeLac is here in person, so we'll turn things over to Nick to run through the items for community development.
In person.
Excellent, thank you, Nick, for joining us.
Thank you, Commissioners, Nick LeLac, uh, Community Development Director, and I'm here because we have a couple of other items on the agenda as well. Um, five legislative concepts, just for you to be aware of, one is, of course, rural accessory dwelling units, ADUs, we've talked about extensively, we understand that bill has been, um, already introduced to legislative council, um, we see that the number two land use.
Wait, on number one, so do we have legislators, or are you aware of legislators that will be the proponents of this?
Good question, I haven't heard that at this point, I just received the notice from AOC that it had, that the bill had been reintroduced.
Because I, I think that, I mean, that's, we're one of the ones pushing this, and we're one of the biggest counties that would really like to do it, some of the others may not have as much, but, um, interesting to see if we can get a local legislator or two to push it, I think the option of each county decides its own course is going to be really important, so.
Well, and item number one and two were basically intertwined, because there was a lot of words about how we need to have this and this in place, and it's going to be a few years, and then the forest, defensible space needs to be worked out, so.
Well, you don't think you can get one without two?
Uh, that's not where it was going in the session.
See, I think they should be separate, I mean, I don't think adding an eight-hundred square foot, so that'd be a good discussion too, do they have to be, because I, you know, an ADU is not a big, it's not a whole much, a whole lot more risk than a, you're adding a barn or a, I don't know, it's not like.
It's another car too, it's another trip or two, it's more people evacuating during emergency situations, I mean, there's, there's a conversation there, uh, but it just felt like, yeah, the wildfire committee at the state level was going to plug this right in and leverage it as much as they could, that's what we saw last time.
You're right, and what made that important last time was that they were aiming for an implementation date of, uh, January first of twenty-twenty-two, so if this is introduced in twenty-twenty-one, will it stay as, at twenty-twenty-two, just six months or so later, post-session, assuming they sign and die, um, which gives us, um, time to implement it locally, which we could do, other counties may take longer, but that's, that's the question, is it six months or is it eighteen months? Um, and of course, the longer it goes, the greater the housing need is. Um, I'll just.
What was the size of the ADU in SV eighty-eight, was it nine hundred square feet? Or how big were they, do you remember?
I think you're right, I don't recall exactly, but it was about nine hundred square feet, I think that's what it was.
It was less than a thousand, so.
I, I, I think that's, I think that's right. Uh, number two appeared to be a consensus approach by a lot of the organizations involved with addressing wildfire and potential building and/or land use standards, um, to create the Land Use and Wildfire Policy Committee, um, I understand from Dave Honeycutt with Oregon Property Owners Association that that bill will be reintroduced, um, with likely bipartisan support early in the session. Uh, number three, a split zone parcel, I just have this on your radar, this is something, I think Commissioner DeBoe, you may have been on the AOC call we discussed a couple of weeks ago, um, myself and a couple of other county planning directors explaining what this is, basically, um, it's, and it shouldn't be a high priority for us, it could be a number three or something of that nature, but, but basically it streamlines the process for people that have resource zone property, EFU or forest, it allows them to, to, um, to partition the property so that, um, the remaining parcel that's going to be rural residential of some sort can build a house, and, and you can actually do it, right now under state, it's complicated, and there's no reason for us to go into the weeds on it, but you can't split zone or, you can't partition a property right now if the resulting resource, farm or forest property, would be less than the state minimum, um, this would clarify and allow that to go forward, so, uh, planning directors, um, seems like there's a DLCD support, it sounds like there's a lot of support for what we've referred to this as a common sense approach. The other two, I just wanted to, as placeholders, we have learned, um, from various organizations, from AOC, um, Karna with COBA, we, we talked about it a couple of days ago, there, there's a lot of, um, movement for two more wildfire bills in this next session, one of them would be to streamline the process to replace dwellings, um, lost by, by wildfires, um, potentially to, to waive land use requirements so that they could be rebuilt quickly, and then also looking at, um, maybe not the current state building code that they would need to meet, but, uh, potentially an earlier one, for example, the year two thousand state building code, so those conversations are underway, and I just, anything wildfire, I'd just like to make sure you're aware of it, um, not that this would apply to us immediately, but number five would, and that is, um, there may be, uh, potential legislation that areas that are in wildfire hazard areas may need to meet, uh, more restrictive, uh, standards or, um, other, other requirements, we haven't seen that yet, we don't know what that means, but, uh, COBA's aware of it, we've heard about it from AOC, and so we haven't seen that concept yet, we understand, uh, that Representative Clem is going to establish a committee of some sort to, to work on drafting some of these, um, these bills, so we'll.
After this last round of fires, I mean, we have it in talent, have it over Lincoln City, I mean, what's not a wildfire hazard zone, I mean, it's so, I, I mean, if you look at the terrain of each of the fires, it's gone, went, you know, came in one, one year, let alone all the other years we've had, seems like that's going to be kind of a, even the whole thing about, you know, what, what are the, um, defensive space require, I mean, those things, those fires just blew through areas, and it didn't seem that defensive space was a key indicator of, or defensible space was the key indicator of whether it burned out or not, I'm not sure what, what was the, wind speed, wind speed, I think.
Yes, we have the wind seventy-five miles an hour coming from California and the Santa Anas, uh, defensible space, zero to five doesn't amount to anything, it could be zero to five hundred, and you could still have an issue because of the embers flying, you know, that was, we, in Deschutes County, were just so lucky that the wind was going unusually the other direction, and we didn't have a fire start where it could have really seriously impacted, because, don't you guys remember that night, it was so smoky, and you knew which way the wind was blowing, but still, it, it was a horrific night, and that reminds me.
Deschutes River Woods had a fire, and luckily they, they stopped it real fast.
That's right.
Right during that event, yeah.
I know, you've got to, and, and, anyway, people, please have your number with our nine-one-one system, and then also you need to, on those kind of nights, figure out if you're going to hear your phone ring, where it's at, um, what, you know, you've got to always be prepared. Eleven people died in my friend's neighborhood in Napa, uh, two years ago with that fire, um, they barely got out, my neighbors barely got out with their lives, eleven people died, they did not get a call, Detroit, I was told, those people didn't get a call, so, you know, somehow, even with all our technology, people are not following through with their phone numbers with their nine-one-one systems, so, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's critical.
So I don't see a number six about non-prime resource land legislation, and, so I, um, I, this was a big subject of one of my debates recently, and I've been kind of developing more thinking, uh, you know, there's also the issue of just elevating the housing goal to where it's not, seems like we have a system with all these fifteen goals, and they're not all on a par, and so maybe we shouldn't have them on a par, that's something, I mean, there's something, and then there's the issue of outside, you know, uh, urban growth batteries, I mean, it didn't really help that Bend added all this urban growth boundary expansion four years ago, there hasn't been a house built in it in four years, so if the city's not ready to build, it doesn't really matter what you do with your, and so, I don't know, they're just, I, I, I don't know what it's going to shape it's going to take, but there needs to be something at the legislative le, level that's going to help a lot of counties, not just ours, but, you know, I've talked to multiple commissioners around the state, so.
Well, think about.
Hoping we can come up with something that.
Just think about if there's a joint resolution in the, uh, you know, the state legislature that says how the, the agreed upon statewide land use planning goals are of equal value or something, and then what debate would happen after that? No, I think that this is more important than that, or, you know, that's just an interesting concept, it could be a simple question, can we do a resolution that says that we support these goals equally?
Or another would be, another idea would be a pricing, a crisis based on pricing, that if you, and pricing gets to a certain point for housing, you know, we're, we're self-imposing this, this crisis in housing by our land use system in many ways, and, and that's why I began to talk about it, so how, how do we undo that somehow, that, um, from, I don't know, I just think that's number six, I, I agree, I don't know quite what it looks like, and what we could get support, but I do feel the commissioners are the best spot, and our counties are the best spots to do it, the cities, they just work within their own confines, they rewrite their rules, and they add this, that, but the, they don't take care of the bigger issue to me, okay.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner, both of those, I, I, Whitney had placed at the top of the legislative priorities, the non-prime resource land, so I was just going to just touch on that.
I thought you were ignoring it, I thought you, you weren't paying attention to what Whitney told you to do, put on your list.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I just didn't duplicate it, because.
I saw it there, but it was like, nobody was owning it, it was like, well, here's some other stupid ideas from the commissioners, or.
And, so the only question, I wasn't intending for the discussion today on the non-prime resource lands, but at some point, to have that conversation, a, and, and what would those changes look like, you know, we have a lot of lists of people that have provided comments with our proposal, but which ones are the, which, which strategic areas would we want to look at, um, that's probably a separate. which ones are the, which, which strategic areas would we want to look at? Um, that's probably a separate conversation. And then I also, I did on my, on my list, because it wasn't a specific bill or a concept yet, but is there a housing package? And I didn't, um, based on what we talked about a couple of days ago, um, among other topics that you've just mentioned, so potentially, I mean, if you wish, that could be a separate conversation as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think this needs to be continued.
Oh, yeah, this will be a process. We'll do a few times.
Definitely. And just to make sure I'm on the same page, Commissioner, do you want to end this item and re, and have, start the conversation again another day? Or you're just saying this will be an ongoing discussion?
It's going to be ongoing and I think we need to get to the, the front of it. It's just like the half a million trees that are being taken out on the road that we drove through all those years, seeing them and knowing they were too close together, and now they're taking out half a million, so. Yeah, we gotta get on the front of things instead of always following behind. You know, just even driving around the city of Bend, I saw a lot of things that should have been cleaned up. We were just really lucky and um people need to take more responsibility.
So, uh, just a reminder, Julie Parish was a, a representative from metro area and she was at the Timber Unity Rally and there was a public testimony period for the carbon bill this last time, a year and a half ago, a year and something ago. And she said, we should be pulling some of those large trees through the, from the right of ways all around the state and, you know, it sounds like kind of a crazy idea, but there are a lot of trees in the right of way up and down those mountain roads. And I've always thought that that, that some of those are very narrow and, and unsafe, uh, and now they're all burned anyway, so. Not all of them, but there's a section of them that are burned now.
Well, I thought it added to the argument of the twenty-one inch rule and re-looking at that.
Yeah.
And um, so I was actually gonna write my own personal little letter adding what's happened and the fact that we have this twenty-one inch rule that really needs to change, so. And now we've burned them up, right? Okay, so where are we at now? Finance?
Uh, for the reasons in finance, I think just submitted some general items of interest and I don't know if, I see both Lee and Greg on Zoom, but I'm not sure if there's anything more to elaborate or any discussion that you'd like to have with the board. If not, we can definitely move forward into community justice. Um, Greg or Lee?
Question for Lee then. So, yeah, the public procurement and energy code mandates, are there any specific items there that are? And are those support or opposed?
Yeah, good questions.
Um, so, uh, thanks, Commissioners, Lee Randall, uh, Facilities Director. Um, those items are just things that uh we watch for each year because they impact county facilities. Um, and so, um, occasionally, I think in the last few years, there've been a, a couple different uh, bills on both those topics put forward. We watch them and then provide information to the board.
Okay, yeah. So those are the placeholders for the topics that may pop up.
Okay, so we'll move forward um with Ken Hales, um, who's gonna talk about the um concepts that were submitted by community justice.
Well, there's just one item of any significance and that is a proposal we expect to come out uh supported by the Community Corrections Directors Association. Basically, they're seeking to get the state to include funding for misdemeanor domestic violence cases as part of the Community Corrections caseload. If that were to transpire, uh, to Deschutes County, we'd be looking at maybe seventy-five to eighty-five thousand dollars annually. It's not a significant amount of money for us, but it is a, it is a, a piece of money that is currently supported through county money that would be supported through state money.
Thank you, Ken.
And that concludes the input from departments um that I'm aware of, at least that Laura and I were tracking. Um, and then at the top of the list, as Nick called out, we were tracking some kind of higher level items that we've captured throughout the board's conversations that you've had recently. So I just, we also wanted to definitely allow for broader conversation about potential priorities of the board and um, that will be helpful for staff as we think about next steps in preparing for the session and coordinating with um PAC West, so. I don't know if that's a conversation the board would, would like to have today, but we're certainly happy to, to have it.
Well, so a couple that I think are, I mean, it, it seems like they're gonna do another cap and trade bill of some kind. I can't believe they're not, so that would be something we'll, we're watching. For, um, another one I'm really interested in is the whole school funding thing because it's touching so many of our citizens and I thought, um, I thought that the schools had a large amount of more money coming from the business activity tax and, and yet, uh, you know, I don't know. I just kind of interested to see what, how much the schools are gonna be doing and then what, what do they re, I'll bet there's some legislation or something about what are the requirements of schools to do in crisis times and, because I think a lot of people are disappointed with the schooling situation right now and but it's hard to know the facts, but I would bet there'd be something on the school funding, school uh authorities. Does the, you know, does Department of Education have the control over all the schools in the state or, you know, does somebody, you know, anyway?
Well, uh, so along that, or just kind of this, the scope of the school budget may be interesting. So that's just educational. It may not be even a advocacy point is, there may be something to advocate after we learn something.
Well, yeah, you know, that's interesting. It's, it's come up in some of my discussions about the mental health aspect in schools. Uh, is that a really, should counties be doing that or should schools be doing that? I mean, it's um, in, in the long run, I don't even know what other districts are doing, but is that some, you know, how broad does the scope of education go?
Well, and you can go all the way as far as, you know, the the breakup of the family, you know, how much responsibility is it the state to take anybody's problem and define it with a professional staff person? Or mom and dad and, and, you know, community and church take these responsibilities? So, I mean, I'm, I'm really hesitant to think that we just gotta keep going down this path of, you know, more support for more individual, individuals. Uh, there was a uh radio spot, public radio just in passing saying that, you know, something about how the community isn't supporting the struggling person. And it was just, you could just tell the concept was, there's no family, so then the community needs to support this person and man, what a shame when, when you go down that path. There's no way we're gonna have enough money to fix everybody's problems in the world.
Yes, the family. Yes, we've lost the family. Um, we did have um families, I think in the nineteen seventies. Um, it was really predominant and now, yes, the family has definitely disappeared and it's really, it's an important part of our, um, our society and we really do need to um promote the family. It, it answers a lot of.
Yeah, behavioral health balance of schools and, because we saw it, the school board asked us, here, partner with us, because in the future, we're gonna have corporate activity tax dollars and we're gonna want to spend it, and if you partner with us for the money that's coming in the future, we could expand a program, which we said, fine, let's talk about it when you have the money and you know more about the program. But, yeah, you've, you've been asked about that also.
It's been, yeah, very, very many times I've been asked. It's become a whole issue of that not doing it or not taking it seriously or whatever, but it's like, it's a whole new scope of, uh, without a lot of um really direction on it. Where is it? How far does it go and?
Well, I would be.
And families are, there are a lot of families that are fighting to, to survive and things like this online learning isn't helping them. I mean, they're, they're cutting their own incomes to try to watch their kids when they really pay us essentially a school system to, has been set up historically to do that daytime activity. Don't you think there may be some legislation about some of this somehow?
Well, I mean, there's a great conversation in there, uh, getting real clear about the, the duties of the school system, because if the school system does provide, you know, reading, writing and arithmetic and lunch and, you know, tutoring or whatever, and then there, you switch gears to behavioral health and physical health, uh, instead of trying to do it all, because we do have those departments at the county.
One thing I did just want to flag for the board while you're having the conversation, um, and in kind of this top section was LC eight seventy-eight, which I forwarded on and I had brought copies of today. This is the proposed legislative concept that would allow local governments to use net revenue from newer increased TRT for law enforcement, fire and search and rescue. And so Phil Schuer has had kind of asked specifically if we have feedback on that concept. He'd be really interested in hearing it. So I'm happy if it would be helpful. I can put these um copies in your boxes, but that's something that is good just to be aware of. And Tom, I think you might have seen some email traffic on that one as well.
Yeah, uh, obviously Commissioners is, um, will not be universally supported, uh, this legislation by either the, our lodging partners or at the state level, ORLA, COBA, but um it does grant flexibility in the use of TRT, which now is fairly constrained to tourism promotion. I know at least one county, I believe Tillamook County, um, and also City of Bend actually are proponents of more flexibility uh with the use of TRT. I'm actually surprised that uh, street maintenance, road maintenance wasn't included and it's pretty narrow for public safety items, but um, obviously this is just a concept at this point. We're not sure uh if it'll get legs or, or how fast it'll run, uh, if it does, so just something to keep in mind.
Yeah, maybe, it may have, you know, be quite a fight, I would think. The, this was one of the solutions that Lepine Fire District had wondered about with regard to their ambulance services. Could we, and we talked about that at my meeting with them. I don't know if you've talked further about using TRT for, because a lot of the people they rescue apparently out of the river are, are tourists or visitors, so that was a theory, but good to know.
Okay, Whitney, um, thank you for going over all this. I think it's a lot to think about and it is, it's October, so we really need to.
We'll be prepared.
Stay on top of it and we won't, you know, we need to make sure that what we need is legislatively in there, not at the end. Not in January, but sooner than later.
Maybe in terms of next steps, we could take our notes from today's discussion and put some of these concepts in our traditional format with kind of numbers assigned and potential department um suggestions on support, opposed, you know, neutral, and then bring that back to the board. Or we could um stand by for a little bit. It's really up to the board on how quickly you'd like to revisit any of these items or continue the discussion, so.
Early November.
For the, for getting into a spreadsheet with priorities like we've done in the past, and then there's the, the bill tracking system that we were, we kind of used in the last few years, but.
Yep, and Laura and I have a follow-up meeting tomorrow actually, um, on that software and we're looking to explore some expanded capabilities for departments and also commissioners to really get the most out of that system, so I think we're excited to keep using it and would plan to keep using it this session.
Yeah, and I support that. I had to log in, but, yeah, it didn't, didn't kind of evolve as much. Oh, yeah, because it's just, the session stopped, that's why. I just remembered. Oh, yeah, I remember why we stopped, because the session stopped. Uh, but, yeah, we were basically spinning up for that last time.
And of course, the two judges weren't listed, but there's a reason why, so just don't want that to slip off.
What do you mean, there, there's a reason why?
Well, because the Department of Justice said they would have them as one of their five bills. That are two, are two circuit court judges to be added.
I still think we should have our own, you know, game, our own ammunition ready and lined up about how it would, you know, whether it's lawyer community or the justice community or the judge community.
It's mentioned under facilities and think about it from Deschutes County's point of view, it's, it's just a facility issue. Because if a judge has pointed out, then we need.
Well, to the county, but to us as commissioners, we represent a lot of people that would benefit from having quicker justice and, yeah.
The business of the county is the facility.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you, Whitney. Thank you, department heads and all those that took part. All right, it looks like we have Will Grove up next.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, Will.
How you doing today?
Well, good.
Good. So I've got for you today, uh, we're bringing back this termination improvement agreement and hold harmless for infrastructure in Tetherow. Uh, we brought this to you previously. This is document number twenty-five for consideration of signature. At our prior meeting, the board had expressed some concerns about the relationship between the homeowners association and the future owners of these uh residences out in the Tetherow subdivision. Uh, in response to this, the applicant had submitted some additional information and I believe that Laura Cooper, uh, the applicant's representative, was going to zoom in today. If she could be added as well. I think it might be helpful because you did have some concerns about um how this is being implemented and I think she could speak best to that.
Okay. Is Laura Cooper available?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, great. Hi, thank you for stopping by this morning.
Yes, of course.
Two in the afternoon.
No, she was here this morning.
Oh, I see.
Yes, she was before ten, bringing in documentation. So, um, I don't think I dreamed it, but it did.
No, no, that's.
Four hours ago.
I was there.
Yes, so, um, thank you and, um, yes, did you read the uh letter for Rick Johnson?
Yeah, thank you very much for providing that. That was exactly the concept. Uh, you know, it, the first version of this, it sounded like there was a plan and everybody generally was supporting each other, but it wasn't obvious. We just wanted to make sure nobody was, uh, you know, holding the bag on something that was. It, it's exciting times for development, but, you know, just moving fast, I guess, is the thought, you know.
Okay.
So I, um, all right, I, so how big is this homeowners association? How many properties?
Twenty-nine lots total.
And how many of them have been built so far?
I actually don't know. Um, I think uh just over half have been sold. Um, I don't think there are very many people living there yet, Commissioner. They've got a builder who is building. He's been buying um four to six lots from my client at a time and um he had, is working on, I think, four lots right now and has four more. And I think my client still owns twelve or thirteen of twenty-nine.
So are they the majority um vote in a homeowners association meeting at this time, if they wanted to be?
No, um, I mean, they are, they are for some items because they have, of course, preferential voting rights as developers typically do before turnover, but turnover has not occurred yet. But they have sold more than half of their lots. They've sold, I believe, almost two-thirds of the lots.
But they still have their, um, what'd you call it? What kind of rights are they? I forget.
They're, they're declarant rights.
Yeah, declarant rights. So, I guess that was our, you know, my concern is just I didn't want to give, you know, say something's done and then, you know, we don't know the developer or of this property specifically. So the trailhead is, is a neighborhood, right?
Correct.
Yeah, it's up by the, somewhere by the clubhouse.
Well, Will, after, uh, you know, our conversation last time, and thank you very much for following up on this. Uh, are there any loose ends that, that are out there or it sounds like it's just kind of put to bed? Any thoughts from your point of view?
I, you know, there were specific issues raised by the Commissioners at, at the last meeting and uh the applicant has provided additional information that get at those questions.
Yeah.
Um, I believe, uh, you know, if you have specific questions, I thought it would be really helpful. I'm very glad Laura's here today to answer them, Mr. Chees. Very well versed in it.
I guess the unanswered question to me, and maybe Laura knows the answer to this, is, so why now? I mean, what, why do they need to terminate it now? They're still selling lots. Why not terminate it when they're done selling lots or what, what's?
So I think that they, you know, it's just another liability on their books, having the improvement agreement and security out there, and so they'd like to complete it because um they're, they're done with construction. And so they, they viewed it as a good time to sort of cut the cord and they've, they funded sufficient funds to cover the repairs. And as, as um the manager mentioned in his, the HOA manager mentioned in his letter, um, the declarant has put in more than the four thousand that's going to be required to repair. And the SACE Construction is the group that's, that's, has been buying most of the lots and they prefer that we not make the cha- make the repairs right now, obviously, because construction is still going on. And they'd like to have construction done. And even, you know, even if we wait, even if we were to wait a little bit longer, you know, their build outs probably, who knows, two to four years probably. So it would be sitting out there as sort of a liability on the books. You know what it's like when you do audits and such. And so they'd like to, to complete it and be done.
Well, is, and the amount of this liability is 39,000 or 41,000 or something? That's all we're talking about?
No, no, the liability, oh, no, the improvement agreement, honestly, I can't remember. It's been so long since we started this process, I can't remember what the liability is. But the liability, the repairs that were identified by the county in its inspections are some curbs and, and little things with pavement. And the estimated cost of those repairs was $4,000. And so the developer put in $30,000 into the reserve account for the HOA, which included the $4,000 for the repairs to the road, but also includes sort of a pre-funding of reserves for the association. Because with them selling to builders, the builders want to know that there are funds in there to do, you know, that they're not going to get tagged with a huge reserve assessment in future years. So.
So really, it's a pretty minor agreement to do something and hold harmless, et cetera. But it hasn't been completed yet. We're just release, we're saying, we'll terminate the agreement. And you'll do, and we're sure you'll do it essentially.
Well, what I understand is, I mean, the improvements have been built, but now there's a punch list of repairs to get to the transfer point. But they don't want to do those punch lists until they're done rolling some heavy equipment.
That's a better way to say, yeah, you're, I think you're saying it right, yeah.
So I'm supportive.
Is that the right summary?
Yes, Commissioner DeBohm was exactly correct.
Exactly.
There you go.
Exactly correct.
Punch list, isn't that a builder term?
It is, it is a builder term.
He's put that in the minutes. He was exactly correct.
Exactly correct. So I'll move
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move board signature of document number 2020 to 645, termination of improvement agreement.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Further discussion, Commissioner DeBohm?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson.
On the assurance that this is going to be back in front of us with some angry property owners down the road.
In 20 years. Okay. Is there a vote?
Yes.
Okay. And the chair votes yes. So thank you very much. Thank you, Laura, for coming by. Nice.
Thank you. You can hunt me down if you get complaints. Thank you.
Okay.
There you go.
I'll put that in the notes, too.
Thanks, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Now we have US 97.
Thank you, Commissioners. So this is a follow up to discussion we've had each of the last two weeks. Last week, we had a discussion just kind of determine the board's position with respect to the proposed South 97 urban renewal district within the city of Redmond. And what we heard was generally favorable comments in terms of the proposal. You have a draft resolution in front of you that tries to capture what we heard last week in terms of reasons why you support it in this case. And it's basically for your deliberation, consideration today. We're happy to make whatever modifications you'd like to the proposal. I do know Sheriff Nelson has been kind of watching this issue also. It's my understanding he met separately with Redmond staff yesterday on this. And he was interested in calling in and giving you his thoughts on the proposal as well. So I think he's on standby. Also, I know that there's some Redmond staff, in case you have further questions or clarifications that you'd like to ask of the city, I believe Chuck Arnold is on standby to do his best to answer those questions. So with that, I guess I'll turn it back over to you to
Okay.
Go through the resolution and let us know how you'd like to modify it, unless you'd like to have the sheriff go first.
I would think Sheriff Nelson should be given that respect and allowed to give feedback from him. If you are available, Sheriff Nelson?
I'm not sure if he's on Zoom or not.
Are you on a phone?
So I thought what I might do, because I think he's remote, is, is call him. And then I can just set my phone next to the microphone here. And you should be able to hear him. And it should get picked up for the minutes. So.
So in terms of the resolution itself, I think I'm pretty happy with the wording.
So it's just an action of asking, just a simple whereas and a section asking for taxes to be delayed redirected for the first year. And it's a resolution of support.
Are you ready? Or I can just put you on speaker. You can speak to the board right now. Okay, Sheriff Nelson is with us.
Okay, Sheriff Nelson.
Hello, everyone.
Good afternoon.
So, yeah, we're just
Go ahead.
Going through a proposed resolution. It's generally a resolution of support, asking him to delay first tax implementation for a year. So that's our starting point.
Oh, well, did you guys want me to give my input, or?
Yes, we do.
Okay. I'll, my input just comes from a very simple stance. City of Redmond came and briefed our office on all of this information. And I understand they're, they're looking to leverage some federal grants for, you know, matching fund options there. And also, they outlined the use on, on what the urban renewal district was. And I don't, I have no disagreements on what they want to improve on with the infrastructure, you know, safer pedestrian traffic, traffic lights, and possibly a fire station. I just, where I come from, and, and it really is just being consistent with the laws. I don't think the Oregon revised statute was meant for these types of uses. It's my belief that the Oregon revised statute is meant for blighted areas. And when I think of a blighted area, one of the first things that comes to mind is Detroit, Michigan, or, you know, or possibly now downtown Portland, based on all the criminal acts occurred down there and some of the federal buildings.
That might have been their plan.
I consider that a blighted area. And, and that's in conversations with our, our legal team at the sheriff's office and, and command staff. So it doesn't have anything to do with what they want to do. I think they've outlined a great plan. I just, I don't believe this is the intention for the Oregon revised statute. And the other thing I would say is, whenever you start looking at these projects that are oftentimes funded by voters through a vote and a bond system, I think that the voters should have a say in it. So that's my two cents. I really appreciate the commission listening. In looking at the effect of the sheriff's office, you know, the total project's estimated to be a $50 million project. And, and, you know, over the lifespan of 30 years, you're looking at four to six million from future revenue to the sheriff's office for public safety. And that's why I make the points that I make. But I really appreciate you all taking my input.
No, thank you so much. We do appreciate your input. I do know what you're saying in reference to Detroit, and I believe now downtown Portland. So, yes.
Well, and I appreciate you. And I'm going to say one more thing about, about this commission. I also appreciate the commission's support for public safety, and then specifically the sheriff's office and stabilization center. I don't want to get too far off topic, but the stabilization center has been a hugely successful project, and it's just becoming more successful with more use. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff Nelson. Thank you.
So if the sheriff wants to remain on, you can kind of hear us discuss it. You know, I, I do have the same problem about the calling this a blighted area. But I had it some, in part of the discussion with Ben's urban renewal district also. That said, as just a strictly business proposal that will enhance the county, the county funds spent now, or what would have been county funds spent now, will add to county property values down the road. I feel confident that that will happen with this particular project. And I've kind of been raked over the coals in some of my things about the Ben decision. But I feel it's better here. It won't be as, it won't be done as extravagantly as Ben was going to do. It wasn't as large. It wasn't as, I don't know, there were a lot of differences. But, and then they have the track record of making it work. So I
Commissioner, can I say one more thing real quick?
Yes.
I also want to say that any future urban renewal districts, from my point of view, because I'm going to be viewing them from, from my same approach, I just wanted you all to know that, that those will be the two litmus tests for me. And, and completely respect whatever discussion you guys are going to have. But I just might as well put it on record that, that urban renewal districts will have to meet what I feel is that blighted area definition. And then I'll always say, you know, on those projects, the voters should be weighing in. But thank you, guys.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do have some support about, on the issue of voters, voting on these directions with their, with policy like this big. But I don't know actually how it would happen for a redevelopment project, whether there'd be a bond you could approve for a city to basically do lots of stuff. So I don't know.
So this is a proposed resolution. Resolution does not have to come from Deschutes County for the city to proceed in support or opposition. As I say, the things I like about it is building out that south edge of, that south portion of Redmond traffic flow, the fairgrounds, the large lot industrial. There's some things that are going to be triggered there that I very much support. But I, I mean, I could definitely just not take a position from Deschutes County and leave it at that. We're going to meet with them, what, next week or something, a joint meeting?
Actually, the joint meeting was canceled.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
So, yeah, I mean, no, no response is a very comfortable place for me. Because as I say, I kind of support it. But, you know, there's the, just as the sheriff said, it's just the, the opportunity that a city council can just take at this point.
Okay, well, I really feel like, because they have done such an excellent job with their prior projects, that's why I have a lot more faith that this project, even though I would prefer the voters were able to vote on it, I, I just feel like this project will be going ahead. I was just told by someone that really, Ben wasn't going to do any more with Juniper Ridge. I just had the privilege of writing out with Deputy Shane Zoo on Monday morning to Juniper Ridge. And, you know, that's, that is an enormous piece of land if they really aren't going to do anything out there.
Well, I think they are after they, after we get the north, all the north transportation, the transportation improvements, then they can. They haven't been able to because there's no, that's been the huge problem. But once we get that done, it could be
Well, is that going to be in the next, like, eight years?
In the sewer interceptor, too.
Yes.
Well, I think in the next, within, yeah, within the next 20. I don't know about eight.
Okay, so now we're talking 20. Anyway, I feel like Redmond, Redmond in 20 years, this project is going to be hopefully moving ahead.
Well, one of the big things, kind of the macro view of the two largest cities in our county is, Redmond is set up to comfortably grow for a long time. And Bend has been struggling at growth for a while now. So there's, there's a point in time where, you know, Redmond's going to go from 30 to 50 to 80 to 100 and possibly, you know, be more population than Bend someday. So as I say, those are out in the horizon. But structurally, Redmond's set up better for that growth.
Well, you know, you know, there's long, with Juniper Ridge, I think part of it was that it was an idea by a city council and whoever the manager were to try to do that. And that wasn't necessarily supported by a lot of the people in Bend, I guess. And then when the college didn't end up going that direction, that was another setback. And it was kind of a series of things that didn't, I don't feel, I don't feel that risk here because I think the, there is a plan for the south end of Bend. And I, I think we're integrally
Southern Redmond.
I mean, southern Redmond. And there's a, we're integrated in that with our, our property there with the fairgrounds and the additional. So it will affect us. And then ultimately, it'll affect that traffic flow, problems we have at certain events. I see it. And then there's the driving force of the, of the airport section. So.
Yes. Our wonderful regional airport. So.
I'm, I'm comfortable with supporting this resolution myself. I know we don't need to. But I'm still comfortable with it. We can wait another week if you want.
Are you making a motion then to support it?
Are you comfortable supporting it?
Yeah. No. I, I, I do appreciate their track record.
And, and we left in the fire department building that's still in the plan.
We didn't call it out as
We didn't, yeah. It's not mentioned specifically.
Okay, well, I'll move board signature of resolution number 2020 dash 065, in support of the proposed South Redmond US 97 TIF plan, urban renewal.
And I will need to second it then. So any further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
I'll go, yes.
Commissioner DeBohm?
No.
And the chair votes yes. So, thank you very much. Thank you. If you're on Zoom.
A split decision.
From?
Hmm?
I know, that's okay. So now, oh, gosh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shane, for joining us. Nick, you're up again.
Thank you, Commissioners. We wanted to provide a brief update, or as long as you'd like it to be, on our technical assistance grant from the Department of Land Conservation and Development to address wildlife and wildfire. Generally, Peter Gatauski would be here. He's out of the office today. So I'm covering the wildfire piece. And Tanya Saltzman is, will be available on Zoom. If she can be elevated, she will provide a snapshot of the wildlife piece. The key with the wildfire is, our plan is to, as we've discussed for quite some time, to engage the public beginning later this month to, to begin to test the wildfire mitigation advisory committee's recommendations in, in, out of the public. And we've been coordinating closely with Whitney, which has really been terrific for us. We have a couple of proposed options. One is, we're going to have a very interactive website with an online survey so people can, can participate and share their perspectives there. We have a couple of planning commission open houses, a couple of virtual open houses for the public to participate in. One is scheduled for later this month, October 21st, and a second in, in November, scheduled for November 19th. And then the last one we proposed, but we really want to make sure we have the board's support or your opinions before we consider this further, is a statistically valid survey. The, the survey would cost about $7,000. We have about the balance of that available from the grant we received from DLCD. And in that way, you wouldn't, for example, it, it could either verify or, show different results from the online survey that if one side or the other had a disproportionate influence on that, this might provide a, a, a different perspective than what we see online. Not that we don't want people to participate, we certainly do. We want people to share their perspectives. But we really wanted your feedback on that. We have not conducted a statistically valid survey in CDD before on, on any of our issues. So that's something we're suggesting now. So our goal is to complete the public outreach, whether it includes or does not include the valid, the statistically valid survey by mid-December, summarize those results for you, and then bring those back to you in early 2021 to, for you to decide how you would like to move forward, if you'd like to move forward.
So, pardon me, to get clear, so adopting Building Code 327.4 and defensible space standards, that's, that's kind of the crux of this whole thing, right?
Exactly.
And then it's going to be a decision point in the future for really plugging those in. So getting out to the community is education, understanding, and then kind of acceptance or willingness or conclusions of citizens.
Right. And so the key would be, based on what the community says, we would share that with the commissioners. And then if you chose to pursue one or both of those paths, then that would just begin a whole nother, that would then that would just begin a whole nother, that would begin the public process of drafting those amendments to county code. And then there would be another public process, followed by public hearings with the planning commission and the board, depending on if, what you wanted to adopt. So, this is just testing those initial recommendations as, as a midpoint to inform a board decision on whether to pursue either one of these options early next year.
Into that rural ADU discussion, because this is the kind of stuff that the state legislature was, was thinking of, you know, putting these in place before you can even have a approval for rural ADUs, I think was the discussion. And some of this makes sense here already.
So, I can, if you, we can continue to Tanya to provide wildlife, and then come back to this discussion, or if this approach generally sounds acceptable, then we will, we would proceed with it.
Which is a survey.
Yeah, both an online survey and a statistically valid survey.
Statistically valid survey.
That's the ask right now, or the, yeah.
Okay, so, and you have, we have the funds, so you're just appropriating it there?
We do.
We need our permission to do so.
We actually don't. We have, we have the money, we have it allocated. It's just that, given a statistically valid survey, we just want you, it's, it's something we haven't done before with the department, so we just want to make sure that you're aware that we're considering it. And if you had concerns, we certainly want to honor those and.
Well, I like the idea. And actually, Tim's here, and we did a similar thing with regard to our, some waste management decisions in the waste management plan. We did a survey. And I think the whole key is the questions that are asked.
Exactly.
Because really, what this whole thing is a trade-off between, you know, if you found out it was going to, you know, do you think it's fair, it costs $15,000 more for a person to have a house to prevent, you know, to lower the risk of fire 12% or 15 or 80 or whatever it is. I mean, those, if you just say, do you think people should have fire hardened houses? Oh, yeah, that's a good idea, you know, and so's this, and so's that. But, but it's the trade-offs that need to be targeted, I think, in the questions, questionings about, and if we find out that, because my experience, the problem I see with this in our rural areas, is people like natural wood products. And if we really go away from that, and they like a certain kind of eve, because, you know, so some of these things really do change the houses. And if, you know, it may cause people not to want to live there. And so, is, there's trade-offs. So, making sure that, but I like the idea of a survey to give us some grounding where the, where people are on this issue, because it's hard to tell. You know, it's, it's like green energy. I love green energy, except it costs more.
How much more, yeah?
Yeah, how much more. So, anyway.
So, none of this has really been done for 30 to years then, as far as the animals go?
Right. So, Tanya will provide the summary for the next piece if we're ready to move into that. But I appreciate your feedback. And, and we'd already spoken with Whitney, and we completely agree that the questions really matter with the survey, so.
When I think of it as an educational opportunity, you're touching people, you're asking them, hey, you're up to speed. And we're going to share some information with you and what's your opinion, so.
Yeah, I'd offer to, to help a little bit with that, just because I'm kind of aware of the, when we were considering that, that new standard, I met with the builders and the, you know, different variety of people to talk about it, so.
Thank you.
Should read your questions.
Great. If I can just turn it over to Tanya now, that would be great.
That would be great.
She can provide just a snapshot of this next piece.
We actually got to see her in person, I think.
I was, yes, it's true. I was across the street for a brief moment yesterday. You can hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, good. There was a little echo on my end. And I will also add that as part of the wildfire, we are, that's a very good point, Commissioner Henderson, about kind of how you shape those questions. We're currently working on the website aspect of all of that, and kind of how much education we're providing. And that's been kind of a critical thing, and to spell it all out and say, you know, if it's going to cost you this much, you know, we have to weigh those. And we're, we're spending a lot of time trying to shape that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Make it less abstract, basically.
Well, and if you get into numbers, just a caution, don't let the, you know, the advocates of a result decide how much things are going to cost. Ask people that really know, because it's, you know, a lot of hocus pocus in some of this stuff, in my opinion.
We'll do our best, for sure. And just a quick update regarding the wildlife habitat inventory update. This is the second half of the TA grant. And as Commissioner Dare noted a minute ago, these, these updates have not been done in roughly 30 years. So, that, this project is kind of setting up, taking the temperature of, of what potential inventories could be updated. And then eventually, we'll be taking to the public to see kind of what, what public support for updating these inventories could be. There, the first technical advisory committee was held at the end of August. The main purpose of that was to select the three inventories that this project is going to, going to encompass. Obviously, there's a lot more than three inventories out there, but given the scope and the budget and the timeline, this is kind of meant as a pilot project to see how this effort can be done, because it hasn't, it hasn't been done before. So, that's pretty exciting for us. And that technical advisory committee consisted of Representative ODF and W and DLCD, as well as the county, us, and our consultant, which is Mason Bruce and Gerard, Gerard, excuse me, a wildlife biologist. Ultimately, they selected to study the mule deer, mule deer winter range habitat, sensitive bird habitat, which includes bald and golden eagles, and then the elk winter range habitat. These were selected for, it was a fairly easy decision on their part, I will say. They all kind of realized that these are, these are the biggies essentially. And, you know, given their experience with development proposals thus far, they've, ODF and W in particular noted that these are, these are the ones that kind of get in con, potential conflicts with development proposals, and they're involved in a lot of these proposals. So, these were the species or the inventories that they selected. Going forward, there's an interagency working group, which is going to be comprised, or it is comprised, of the consultant and ODF and W. And I believe they are bringing in other agencies as necessary, federal or state or local. And these are the real scientists. They're, as our consultant put it, the doers. So, they're going to be really working to drill down on where these species actually exist, developing maps, developing kind of all of the background data on how this, how it all was collected and what it means. They'll be meeting over the next couple of months. Their first meeting is, I believe, next week. At the conclusion of those meetings, when they've solidified the methodology, they will be providing a report to us to say what they've, what they've learned, how they've vetted these inventories. And after that, then we'll begin the public process, which will largely follow a similar pattern to the, to that of wildfire. Obviously, COVID has kind of turned our public comment experience on its head. And I think it's actually been really valuable, because we're exploring different techniques and different technologies. So, once we have these, the data about the species, we'll take that out to the public, explain what it could potentially mean to update a gold five inventory, and then have the consultant available. And that will probably take place in the beginning of next year. And we will be checking in with the board throughout that time and providing them with the draft report from the consultant, explaining the background information about these, these inventories and why they were selected and where they are. So, we're still at the, you know, in the beginning of this project, but it is moving forward. And, you know, the next couple of months will be, there'll be a lot of progress made. So, that's where we stand on that part of the project.
So, Tanya, how many elk were in Deschutes County 30 years ago? Do we have a number somewhere?
I do not have that number. I could probably get it. We don't have any kind of numbers or kind of, or acreages yet. That's what they're working on. And so, the, part of what that report will explain is that, that change. So, they'll say, you know, we have this many, and now we have this many. And it's over this area, it used to be over this other area. So, that data is forthcoming.
We usually have like a herd of 140 in my neighborhood at the hay ranch, or down the road at another hay ranch. So, you know, usually it's like February, something like that, that they all come in. But I just wondered, you know, how many thousands did we have?
Well, I think we had less, actually.
Really?
So, yeah, I think elk have increased and the mule deer have decreased. I think the elk are less affected by some of the predator populations, for one thing. And then, I don't know, there's probably a lot.
The cougar population has doubled?
Yeah, that probably affects deer more than elk, would be in my.
Do you believe, yes, that elk has increased. That's correct.
I got a question about your staffing. So, who, how many people in the county are part of this advisory committee?
For the technical advisory committee, it's, I guess, two to three. It's from community development, just managing the consultant, basically.
It's, it's what?
It's working with the consultant and the ODF and W. So, just our, our CDD representatives of myself and Peter Gutowski.
So, you are at the meetings and involved with it?
Correct. Not at the agency.
My concern is that, you know, we've had ODF and W sometimes on some of our deals. They're not, not really be an objective observer, but an advocacy group almost. And I just don't, I, I don't want, I want us to be involved in drawing maps, not just advocacy groups alone. I mean, I don't care if advocacy groups are at the table, but I don't want it to be dominated. And I don't know what DLCD does, but in general, I'm not, I guess that they're, they're giving some of the funding, so maybe that's why they're at the table. But I don't, I just want to make sure we got a balance on this committee that talks about what did the, you know, it ends up being, what do the people in Deschutes County see and want to do and things, not just what do advocacy groups want, so.
No, that's a really good point, and something that we have definitely thought about. I will say that this part of the project, you know, this is going to be, ultimately, the grant covers a very small part of what will be a, ultimately, a much larger project for the actual update, if the board chooses to go that direction. Right now, it's kind of more the data gathering. So, we're just literally getting kind of the reports of, you know, however they collect this information. And they're just saying, we believe it's here. And that's, you know, they're not making a judgment call on that. And we're going to then take that, just that data out to the public. So, you know, we, we want to make sure that we just have first the science and then, and then bringing it out. And then, you know, after this process ends, if the board chooses to pursue updating the inventory, then there's, similar to the wildfire, there's a whole additional public process for kind of this specifics of the maps and how much of the map might be involved, how much not, might not be, you know, conflicting uses, that sort of thing. That's when all of that gets balanced.
So, two other thoughts I have. One is that, you know, I'm interested how much habitat there is that bald eagles and golden eagles use. But I, they're a pretty limited species in terms of where they go. I mean, having spent part of my spring with, or summer with, I guess it's spring, with my red-tailed hawk family, I'm, I can see how they fit in more around our environments. The other part, I'm, I'm really interested in the water issue. Nobody's talked about how the water supply of this, of the irrigation canals we built over 100 years helped the habitat for the, for animals. But as we dry all those up and eliminate them, how that might play into the, particularly the deer and elk populations, because it's, I think it's a factor. If they don't have water, they won't be in an area. And so.
Yeah, that's a great point. I think hopefully the, we can help shape the report that they give kind of the background of, you know, in addition to where things have moved or how the population has grown, perhaps the whys behind that, which would include.
Oh.
That's a, I mean, I do support that, you know, just a extra little, you know, maybe pull it out in its own little section or something, talk about water for any of these analyses that get done. Because we've had a lot of input from community members saying, you know, that canal behind my house and the ducks that are in it are the more important thing in the community. And, yeah, it does attract wildlife and it supports wildlife, so.
I'll note that. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
And I do remember we had the golden eagles down on McKenzie Canyon. That was one of the locations. And I have bald eagles over my house. And I, I have all these species right at my house, pretty much so. So, anyway, well, yes, horses chase them. So, it's, it's all a happy family. But no, thank you, Tanya. I mean, I can't believe it's been 30 years. So, it would, you know, this is really important that we find out exactly where numbers are going, you know, and, okay, will there be way more elk? And will there be, you know, 50% less of the mule deer? And how has the state actually adjusted that with the number of tags they give out for the various species?
It's an exciting project. We're, we're looking forward to seeing, seeing it through.
Yeah, it's a great project. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you for joining us today. Okay, Whitney, did you want to do the state of the counties? We are. Let's see, what is it? It's 2:30. We're just a bit, bit late.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it different?
Thank you, commissioners. We spoke last week briefly about the upcoming state of the county presentations that we have scheduled with the Ben Chamber, the Redmond Chamber, and the Sisters Chamber. Those events are scheduled. Redmond and Sisters will be having a joint virtual event on Friday, October 23rd. And the Ben Chamber will be having a virtual event on Tuesday, October 27th. You have in front of you a draft content outline that I've put together in an attempt to check in with you about the content of what we would include in the state of the county presentation. And once I get direction from the board today, my hope is to go forward and start working on those slides, and then bring you back a presentation for your review and feedback. So, staff put our heads together and tried to come up with an outline of, of current topics and items that might be of interest to chamber members. But definitely welcome your thoughts and feedback. And there may be items that are not included here that should be. So, I wanted to just check in with you before we start development of slides.
Well, one that I have is, I wouldn't start with COVID-19. I think I'd end with it or something. I, I think we should talk about everything else first before we get into the, the pit of, never, bottomless pit of COVID-19 and all of its parts, just personally, just because.
We had 11 more cases today.
It just seems like it's something we've all, it'd be nice to get out some fresh things we're working on before we get into the, you know, what's holding us all back. Yeah, so I, I like the idea of doing stabilization center and Veterans Village together, if we can, as this kind of new projects to help with certain things. I like that a lot.
Well, and just real quick, for COVID-19, pulling up the local public health authority, kind of the basics, 36 counties, you know, Oregon Health Authority and the governor have been kind of setting the rules, but this is where it gets implemented, would be the message.
Yeah. And I like some of our charts a lot. I mean, I really think we should, if we share some of those charts, like the hospitalization chart or the positivity, I mean, there's some special.
The hospitalization chart is not Deschutes County. So, that's a problem with it. We need to actually have a, to take it back and make it Deschutes County.
Well, I agree with what you're saying, but it, but the two spikes are kind of, I think, reflective of the way that hospitalization's been. I, I don't know if, well, yeah, I'd love it if somebody would do that. I'm surprised we don't know that, but.
We keep talking about it.
But.
Like, reminding them that we do want to know the.
Every week, yeah. But, but anyway, at some point, we should look at what charts might be good. I think those are the amount of testing we've gone from.
An invitation to the Wednesday item, you know, the fact that, the fact that it's out there, if you don't watch it real time, you can watch it after the fact. We're separating it out on Facebook for people to watch. Because, you know, you don't need to watch it every week, but if somebody gets it to sit through it for a half hour, and they're like, oh, wow, you know, because it's a good view of all the information.
It is amazing how many people watch it.
Yes, I, we got a lot of feedback today, almost 60 comments on that video before lunch. So, yeah, people are definitely.
What do you do with the comments?
We have staff reply to them where that's appropriate. And when we.
I'd like to see them. I never have known what anybody thinks about what we're doing.
Yeah.
Well, I don't. You know, we don't get any feedback. Wouldn't you, I'd be honest with what people ask.
Positive or negative or.
Yeah, yeah. I'd like to, maybe you could print out or run out of all of them for a couple of weeks, because I, I didn't know anybody commented.
Oh, yes.
I didn't know anybody watched.
I didn't know anybody watched either. I didn't, no, I didn't really know anybody watched, and so.
We have the winners.
Well, two. They don't watch very closely, only two, one or something. But the road improvements, I think we can do quite a bit on.
Chris gave us some great slide information, and we also have some cool live video that we can pull in. So, we're just, I think, looking to make this interactive and fun. And.
Yeah.
At some point, there's two opportunities in here, one with COVID and one with the survey Nick was just talking about. where we could potentially do some live surveys of participants where they can text on their phone, so just kind of trying to break things up if that's something.
You set that up and you get people to do it, I have no idea how those things work.
So this will be a Zoom, interactive kind of thing, or not interactive, it'll be a presentation people will be able to watch. I'm just thinking through, would we want to try to be sitting in the same room or just in our offices or from our homes or, you know?
I think our initial thought, which totally is open to the board's feedback, was that it would work well for you to be down in this room, because we just have the systems in place and the audio works well and we're, there are kind of fewer variable factors.
You could zoom in on each one of us as we're speaking.
The lighting is excellent in here, yes.
The temperature is always just right.
So is it 10, yeah, so are they both at noon? So what, one thing that's not on here is economic impacts of kind of what we're seeing now. I don't know if you've got that in the COVID, not specifically, I guess, but that'll be a, people are going to wonder, you know, where is the county going from here? So one is the growth issue, CDD talking about building permit applications, you know, this has been a surprise to some extent that we thought there'd be a slowdown, because there's economies off a little, actually, it's a ramp up, because everybody wants to move here, and we heard that again from the chambers today. So that would be a good update for everybody, I'm sure everybody already knows it, but if we can get any stats on that, so kind of CDD-type staffs about, you know, growth in the future. Let's see, Cora, somebody recently had some great stats on the cost of housing, how much it's been impacted by everything. Who was it? I can't remember where I was when this, anyway.
Well, what we're going to have is more unaffordable housing, so.
Well, it's dramatically unaffordable now.
Yes.
Yeah, it's.
Yes, when people are getting paid $100,000 more than what their asking price was, yes.
Yeah.
And then on page two, we had kind of just an item where we can put some content together around elections and just reminding folks about the county's role in that through the clerk's office and ballot drop boxes, those types. So if the board wants to, that will certainly be leading into a week where it'll be a hot topic, so.
Well, we don't know, I actually don't know anything about it, like what we're doing for election security, so are we going to have a presentation on it before then, or?
We could definitely arrange for our presentation for the board, or we just shot some videos with Nancy and we could embed a video with Nancy kind of speaking on that topic, so the board wants to see, or, you know, or we could let that content stand alone.
So a little bit of, you know, the fact, the date that Oregon started mailing ballots, how it's a mature system here in Oregon, you know, what things are being done to bring it up to the next level, and then, you know, whatever Nancy wants to talk about it. So as I say, Nancy might talk about what's happening right now, and then we could just add just a little bit more to it.
She's just going to really, are you saying she's going to do a video that we're going to play?
It's already been recorded, possibly.
We have some pre-recorded content we could think about using, or we could just, we could think about how to creatively address that, if it's something that we want to include in the presentation.
Okay.
Well, I support a slide or two, or however we do it, just to get across the topic, as I say, pointing out that, you know, we're very confident, we've been doing this a long time, you know, signature verification envelopes, precinct processing.
Well, we don't have that open deadline or ending, do we? You have to, they have to be received that day.
So, and she explained that at 8 o'clock on election night, ballots are swept that are in the post office. So they're truly, you know, if they're at the post office, they're swept, and then they're distributed to their appropriate county, you know, if they're not in your post office or county, so there's just a point in time done.
Very different than what they're talking about in these other states, where if it's postmarked and, you know, so we collect them for weeks and magically.
Until November 17th in Michigan, yes, that really sounds appropriate.
Is that right?
Yes.
Jeez.
Oh, but they'll be postmarked, okay.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Well, and we know that if you sign someone else's ballot in Deschutes County, it will be picked up. And if you sign someone else's ballot in Morrow County, the authorities will know, so, yes. It's, yes, you have to sign your signature, and then it could even still be checked, and you might have to go in and verify that you've signed, so it's, they do an incredible job here. And how many total voters do we have?
No, that's not.
139,000?
It's 150 now.
Is it 150?
It's 145 last time, I think, I got the names from.
145,000 voters, whoa, a lot of signatures.
It was under 100 just a few years ago.
Yeah, it's popped up a lot.
It's, yeah, almost a 50%.
So for the bullet item for marijuana, we could just do the basics, the fact that, you know, the people voted, and we tried to put regulations in place, it kind of get bounced back and forth, and now it's in front of you, the voters. So, you know, I don't know that we need to talk a lot about that, but we can sure make a little case.
Well, I think it'd be interesting just what the vote is.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so make it real clear about, yeah, how we got here, why we're here, and what the vote is, for sure.
And then legislative priorities, I wasn't sure if something like rural ADUs or other topics that we just discussed earlier today, maybe we'd want to lay those out for folks and you could talk a little.
Yeah, I think two or three of those would be good.
Two or three would be adequate.
Are there others in addition to rural ADUs that you'd like to see in that presentation specifically?
Well, the two judges, I mean, it's, that's from a different source, but yes, definitely.
Yeah, that's, that has an impact.
We advocate for three, hoping for whatever we can get.
Yeah, I don't know, I haven't had any discussions at this point.
Actually, we need to be part of the Wildlife Recovery Plan, because we're, we are sitting in an area that historically has a lot of fires, and we want to be part of those decisions that are made, because they could affect us in the future.
Well, there's the one, is that the bill that we, I testified on last time with Ed and Nick, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, something like that.
That bill that, yeah, that they were going to set up all these things, okay.
Well, once we see the legislative priorities, we'll know if those are the right ones at the time.
I know that's very important.
Definitely, and one thing just to check in, because I think I've maybe heard just different feedback over the last couple of years, in previous years, we've kind of set the table for presentations like this with, this is a county, this is what a county does, this are the, this is the pieces of the county. And I think I feel like I've gotten different feedback on, I wanted to check in on if that's how you'd like to frame the beginning of this presentation, or if you just want to jump into kind of what is the county doing at this moment in time.
I like the moment in time, but I don't feel like we need to.
You mean, where the little stick figure and they draw.
I don't want to do the stick figure, I'm just tired of it.
Let's, let's moment in time.
So we, I'm thinking that we should at least have a slide, like with the org chart with elected officials, you know.
Okay, well, let's have a slide, and we should have a slide that actually, of the county, because, you know, people don't all know what the county looks like. You know, they've never been to the, oh, that's in Deschutes County?
The fact that we have 920,000 acres of forested land that's federal, and then we have 80,000 acres that is actually private in Deschutes County.
Okay, I will pull the org chart and the map that displays that and we'll scrap the video, so that sounds good. I will come back to you with slides, and if you have thoughts or feedback in the meantime, please feel free to let me know.
Two other items real quick, possibly fitting in the Popular Annual Financial Report, I don't know if.
Oh, yeah, that'd be cool.
You know, either we have a slide on it or at least a link to it, say if you're really interested in the county.
The question, right.
Because that's where we could be selling it, what did you say, I'm sorry?
We're not giving away anything.
Oh, yeah.
Free, free, you know, the people that answer that, multi-part. Yeah.
And then population trend, it'd be interesting if there's any new numbers on that, you know, so that's a, yes, you, community development thing, but if there's a population, we could fit it in wherever and maybe not use it, but if there's somebody saying, your population was this and now it's this, or, you know, estimate is this and this, that could be interesting.
We could also bring up the census, because I believe they extended the deadline till the end of October, so it would be a perfect time to remind people that it is really critical for funding, and, you know.
Yeah.
You know, maybe we could.
99 point something percent.
What is it?
Commissioner Derad's asked me to check, we were not at 99%, but I could have missed an update, so.
You think we're at 99%?
I saw something the other day that I thought said that we were there, but maybe I was misreading.
I don't know, it sounds good.
I've got to go get my booklet, discretionary grant booklet.
Thank you, this is really helpful.
Thank you.
Do you need yours, you could use mine.
Well.
I have, I have.
I got to take a break anyway.
Okay. Okay, well, I have to leave at 3:00.
You have to what?
What is it I have at 3:00 today, 3:00 to 4:30?
What?
I know, I'm like, oh, my life.
We've got several executive sessions.
I know, I think it's over at 4:30. I have the Regional Equity in Recovery Council meeting. I mean, I could listen to it on a, with my headsets. This is the South and Central Regional Solutions. And I don't know why they set it up for Wednesdays, or this Wednesday. Please, okay, I do have a phone call.
We're going to take a five-minute break?
Well, yeah, because he went upstairs, it'll take me five minutes, right? Laura, we've just made a decision to do the discretionary grant review next week. I have another meeting, and there's several important things that I need to do before I get on that meeting, so we could do that next week. I do need to, look at the hospice of Redmond, that should be really under fundraising, I believe. It's.
Okay, we can move that.
It's placing a fundraiser, so if we put that down below the line, that really helps our allocation, because that makes two of them. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Now, actually, we need, okay, now we have other items, so you're saying we were supposed to do the Facilities Project Review applicants today, and we wanted to get it down, what, seven, nine? How many did we have? We have, I have a lot of checks, four, six.
It was 10 or 11, Eric crops up speed on that too.
Eight, nine, I have like 10.
Yeah, I think that was the number.
Two, four, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, okay. Eric, are you available?
Yeah, I don't know that he's.
Well.
He wasn't notified that that's what we'd be doing right now, but.
Okay, we don't see Eric there, do we?
Well, the other thing is, we could do it next week, because we don't actually have a project.
Yeah.
For them.
For them, that's the start right now, we've got some coming up, but.
Okay.
What do you think about that?
Would that be terrible for them?
Well, I was just saying, I was advocating for the process we have open, that's all I was doing.
All right, so we're going to do that next week.
I mean, it's not critical.
Okay, oh, here comes Eric. Eric, I show that we had 10 people checked off for the Facility Project Review applicants?
That's correct.
Okay, I was really hoping that we could get it down a couple more, seven, eight, something like that, I don't.
We were just punting to next week possibly.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, and if you want to give that guidance for a specific number, Eric and I might be able to do that.
Come back with recommendations.
Yeah.
Yeah, so let's, let's try and hit seven, I mean, and then have two alternates.
That's fine.
Seven with two alternates, because I know we said this alternate was number nine, and 11 was an alternate.
I'll explain, and as I say, there was just, it was a group of people that weren't in the industry as much, so we'll let's bring them, so we can come back, we can bring them back.
Okay, so seven and two, okay, great, so we'll do that.
So that'll be you and I working on that.
Good job, Eric.
Happy I could help.
Yes, great, okay, are there any other items that we need to do right now?
Well, one I need to get out to you, this is the charter as it stands right now for the Deschutes Basin Water Collaborative, and we haven't yet approved the charter, which is they're waiting for us to do, and it's probably because you didn't know about it. And also, we need to make sure, we need to vote that we're going to be member of the group. What I was going to do is just give this to you to read today, and maybe we can approve it next Wednesday. I, just so you know, a little background, I haven't been very involved in the charter part of it. You know, originally, we weren't asked to be involved in the planning, and it was only by some pressure that they realized that maybe Deschutes County should be a party. There's, if there's any concerns I have about the overall committee, it's that there's too many, it's a huge committee, and they, they have, you know, the selection, I'm not quite sure, some of the members, I know, like COIC's a member, and I'm not sure what interest they have in the water business, other than somebody there might have an interest, but it's not really their, you know, it's mostly irrigators and other water users, cities, counties, but it's a big, big group. The other issue that I see as a challenge with this collaborative is, you know, the Forest Collaborative is very structured around advising the National Forests what to do. This is a little more complicated, because there isn't an entity, so if you'll take a look at this, and we can talk about it next week, or we can go over, and I'd like to get to the point where we've approved the charter. It's probably late for us to try to change it, but I could fight for something if there is something you want to fight for.
Well, there's two ways to go here, as I say, Deschutes, Crook, and Jefferson are part of COIC if we want to be indirect members, just a high-level view.
I think we should be members, because we represent all these people in real life. COIC represents no one except entities, but we represent these citizens that are affected by the water, and that's why, that's one of the reasons I pushed to get in, because originally, they didn't even include us in the planning for it, and it's like, well, who, we represent more people than anybody in terms of this voter, you know, residents, users of water and all, because otherwise, it gets real focused on the irrigators, the environmental groups, the fishermen, but the rest of us that just have a river system, what do we want to do with it, type thing, so.
Well, and then, yeah, so then the next step is have a discussion, which we can do individually with Crook and Jefferson commissioners, about what does it look like from their point of view to participate in this collaborative? So I'm just thinking, to putting more context around why we are involved, what we would want to get out of it.
Yeah.
You know, so that, that's what I'm thinking.
Well, Commissioner Similak said, Patty, why is Deschutes County not there? So that was, you know, that's where I was hearing it from, like, why were we not invited to the table and Jefferson County was? So it was.
Well, and why it was only one of three counties when you had.
Right.
And now they've got citizen members of marginal relationships with the river that represent really no one that are on it, so.
Okay, so we're going to read this and come back, because I know it was mentioned, and we do need to approve.
Yeah, approve the charter.
And make comments, and has Dave seen it?
And can we have a, I don't know if he has, I'll give him one, can we have a vote that we want to be a member? COIC represents no one except entities, but we represent these citizens that are affected by the water. And that's why, that's one of the reasons I pushed to get in, because originally, they didn't even include us in the planning for it. And it's like, well, who, we represent more people than anybody in terms of this voter, you know, residents, users of water and all, cause otherwise, it gets real focused on the irrigators, the environmental groups, the fishermen, but the rest of us that just have a river system, what do we want to do with it type thing, so.
Well, and then, yeah, so then the next step is have a discussion, which we can do individually with Crook and Jefferson commissioners, about what does it look like from their point of view to participate in this collaborative. So I'm just thinking, to putting more context around why we were involved, what we would want to get out of it.
Yeah.
You know, so that, that's what I'm thinking.
Well, Commissioner Semelik said, um, Patty, why is Deschutes County not there? So that was, you know, that's where I was hearing it from. Like, why were we not invited to the table and Jefferson County was? So it was.
Well, and why it was only one of three counties when you had.
Right.
And now they've got citizen members of marginal relationships with the river that represent really no one that are on it, so.
Okay, so we're gonna read this and come back, cause I know it was mentioned and we do need to approve this.
Yeah, approve the charter.
Or, and make comments. And has Dave seen it?
And can we have a, I don't know if he has, I'll give him one. Uh, can we, um, have a vote that we want to be a member of the Deschutes Water Collaborative?
I'm not ready for that today.
Okay.
Is there a staff person coordinating this or running it or anybody?
Well, Scott Acock has primarily been the one. And, oh, well, there's another one. Um, Fitzpatrick.
COIC staff member?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's been the issue to me is, well, they're coordinating it, they're facilitating it, and they're a member on it, so.
All right. Okay, so we've got that assignment. Are there any other assignments then?
Not for me, no.
Okay, so now we need to take a two-minute break to go into executive session, I do believe?
Well, yeah.
Okay.
This is on Veterans Village. I don't, Dave, I can't get you this very easy, but I think you can follow what we're saying, um, on the Veterans Village. Uh, I've got a copy here for you if you wanna get it, but it's not. So all, this is another real estate executive session. Do we need to call it out or?
Yes, real estate, real property. Oh, my gosh, thank you so much. Um, thank you. We are now going to adjourn our regular meeting. We will not have a meeting next Monday. We will have a meeting next Wednesday at 10:00 AM for Deschutes County Commissioners. So that would be, um, October 14th, I believe. So we will talk to you then and look forward to seeing you with our Facebook.